Mr. George, please leave the pledge. Please rise, take your hat off, put your hand over your heart.
[laughing] To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I should have said, please take your hat off and put your hand over your heart. Anyway, this time we'll observe a moment of silence. Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Gustan, absent. Zadra?
Here.
Sfraza?
Here.
George?
Here.
Azzy?
Here.
House Jeff?
Here.
Keshel?
Here. All right. This time we'll go to public comment. No, I'm gonna do public comment first. That's before the approval of... Well, we should do approval of the agenda. Before we do approval of the agenda, that is out of order. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Zadra has requested item L8 be moved to hurt after the public comment. L8 is animal control services. Proclaimations, none. Special presentation by the mayor today. Presentations, item D1, Fire Chief Hernandez. Item D2, Employee of the Quarter. Item D3, Specialty Health and Staff, Chief Pitts. Public hearing, 12:15 on items F1 and 2. Time certain, item J4, to discuss the approval of a WORTH architect group. Public hearing, there are none tonight. There will be a joint city council redevelopment agency after 2 o'clock today. Any other changes? Yes?
The L8, you want after public comment? Can we do that after presentations, maybe? I think that might take a little while.
The mayor and I talked about it and we're thinking that many of the people might like hearing that conversation.
Okay. So we'll leave L8 there unless someone wants to change it?
Good thinking.
Are any other changes to the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the amendments of October 26th.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll go to public comment. Mr. Murkell.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Hi, council members and city manager. Thank you for... I'm here today to warn people not to get in the car with a drunk driver. I got in the car with a drunk driver and I wasn't wearing my seatbelt and I got ejected and landed on my head. But I also want to tell you that in the city of Reno, there's been 608 DUIs this year. As of October 24th, and there was 12 arrests over the Halloween weekend and no fatalities. This is just in the city limits. But whatever you do, don't get in the car with a drunk driver and don't drink and drive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Somebody wants to speak. He put his name down, is L9. Or 29. Is there Bravo?
Mr. Mayor.
Homeless?
How are you, sir?
Fine, sir. Introduce yourself to the public and...
My name is Ar- Renee Bravo.
All right.
And I'm a citizen. I talked about this last time, the matter of homelessness. And I know it's a problem to cities and towns, all the cities probably. I have a solution.
Go ahead.
There's a gate, there's a fence, and within that area, there are facilities there that are important to a lot of people, probably the most important facilities to use. There's telephones, there's computers, there's counselors, social workers. The women's shelter is in there, the men's shelter is in there. There's a lot of things in there. There's a lot of things in there, okay. The problem is, people come from the four corners. And they come there and they... I was one of them. The only reason I ever go there anymore is just to use the telephone. They come from everywhere and they go in and out, in and out freely, see? Now, there's a fence there and there's a gate over here that's for the cars. It's a bigger gate. Smaller gate's for the people. I suggest that anybody that wants to use those facilities, the important facilities, and there are other facilities on the outside. There's the mission there and there's the kitchen over here and then over here is the pantry over here and there's a thrift store and then I think there's something else and parking lot, so forth. Anybody that wants to use these facilities should allow themselves to be screened. You think that's a good idea?
Don't know. We'll have to look into it.
Okay. I mentioned this last time, right? I mean...
Not about screening.
Not about screening. Well, I've been thinking about it, see, and I think it's a good idea. Screen these people, you know? It doesn't have to be a long process, just a few short questions. And find out who they are, what they want here, what their plans are, and things of that nature. And this might go a long way toward controlling this problem.
Okay.
There are people that just go in there and they hang out, they stare at people, they've got no direction. They probably end up leaving. They might end up going to jail. I don't know, dude, but it's... It might be a good idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Wilcox? Now, Mr. Wilcox, did you wish to speak on items E0, C1, and C1C1? Or do you want to speak at public comment? Because you're not gonna speak at both. Oh, you want to do it now?
No, I'll do it.
Okay, on the item. Jean Yupp?
Hello, my name is Jean Yupp and I've appeared before you before. I came here to speak to you. I've been on Moana for 25 years, have a business there. For the whole summer, Lakeside was dug up and had detour signs on Moana and all across Lakeside, everywhere. It blocked access to my office from my patients. There was a detour sign right in the middle of the entrance to my office. And then Limbury was also had detour signs and that was done for about a month. Lakeside has been worked on for three years. And the other one was Plumas being worked on. All of this is detoured. People come into my office and they do complain. And now the work begins on Moana Lane for at least a year. This is according to Mr. Malloy. And for the next year or more, there's gonna be more traffic congestion, which you guys acknowledge there is traffic congestion there. And a lady from the city, Jamie Schrader, came to my offices and I tried to talk to her about it and she was very kind. But now you've okayed Occupy Reno, which is located on the edge of a congested area. The city council already acknowledges the congestion in that area. I have a business license, I pay my permits, I pay for my inspections, I obey all OSHA laws, I pay my personal property tax, I pay for my utilities, my toilets are clean and I have parking for my clients. The city should provide me or enhance me or enhance my situation in getting my patients to my office in a proper manner and not being detoured all over the place. No councilman has offered to pay my financial needs at my office. And I'm more than willing to show my financial records for the next three months as compared to what I had last year because of what you guys have done. And I'd like to see the damages and see how they're gonna be handled. I do not object to anybody protesting, but I'm gonna paraphrase something that Coach Wooden said to Bill Walton. I acknowledge your right to protest, but I do not accept your premise that you can block people who need the services and goods that are provided here in this area. And I believe Occupy Reno will take up that space and do detriment to the people that are doing business there. You have open space here at the Mapes, the old Mapes area. You have open space at the federal building. You have open space everywhere. And I don't know why you're doing this to this area, because there are very... A whole bunch of primary caregivers in that area that do provide services. And I think your commitment to this and this area is very wrong. Thank you.
Thank you very much. James Casera?
Hello, my name's James Casera, a Reno resident, and I'm here to ask the city council to put on the agenda about the amendments to the grandfather clause at the rodeo and for the RSCVA. I talked to Commissioner Kitty Shong and she says the best way to go about it is get Dwight George to bring it up to this RSCVA meeting and the council could override Jill Kelly's turn down of this matter. And for all of you, get together and talk about it. You need to be at the city council meeting. So that's what I'd like you to do. And that would also include getting the amendments to the fair, the fireworks, and all of that to the livestock event center, because this is a Reno problem, not just that neighborhood problem. And the rodeo, a few people at the rodeo every year want and do break the law every year. And this should be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sam Denae.
Sam Denae, the Encyclopedia of Reno Government, the most trusted name in Nevada government. If I seem a little woozy today, it's because I just donated some blood the other day and you can go down to the bank there and you can make some bids on it. Sam Denae's blood, a whole pint of it. The... Thanks for the chortle back there, I liked that. Sam is an Air Force Academy graduate and he spent many years flying fighters and bombers defending our nation. Sam used to be a pilot for Pan American Airways and they were blown out of business and the only thing they have now is a television series going on. That's okay. After Sam's airline was blown out of business over lockup by the terrorists, Sam started attending these city council meetings, much to the chagrin of the city council and the rest of Northern Nevada government. Sam has put his name on virtually every local election ballot that he can find for the last 15 years. And if it wasn't for a bunch of stolen votes and maybe... Oh, and the dysfunctional media, the dysfunctional Northern Nevada media, Sam would have been elected, starting at city council, then mayor, then governor, and he would probably be senator by now if the truth was printed about Sam. But I'm not trying to act like a curmudgeon up here, I'm just telling you all the truth. Before I go any further, I want to throw in my heavy-duty kudos to all of these folks here. By the way, if I'd known there were gonna be this many people at the Sam Denae Show, I would have brought my guitar. At any rate, I want to give you them kudos for their phenomenal response. And not just all of these people, but the whole city. Hundreds and hundreds of people were involved in that. My two daughters are critical care nurses over at the hospital and they said they never saw so much devastation in their whole career. At any rate, they responded to what was really basically a tragic twist of fate, just one of those things that happen. You go through your life and something happens to you and you say, why did that happen to me? Why did it happen to me? And you don't have any explanation for it. And there basically was no real explanation for that. They had 20 acre... I mean, 20 square miles of land where that poor pilot could have crashed. He crashed right in a little area as big as this city council room. At any rate, that's a terrible thing. I... By the way, I was on the... For those who want to see more or hear more of Sam, besides Channel 213, which is hard to find, you all can go to YouTube. Just put in Sam Denae Reno. You can see more of Sam Denae than you ever dreamed you'd want to see. You might even get a couple of cameos for our beloved mayor up there. Yes, he did. I got you on there many times. I guess you don't go to my Youtubes, huh? At any rate, that's okay.
Where do you find that? At Safeway or Sears?
[laughing]
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Find you at Safeway? No, on our little commercial that we're doing.
No, the YouTube.
Everybody said I did such a wonderful job on that commercial that I wasn't invited back. At any rate, I want you guys to have a nice... And just don't trust anything the media says when it comes to politics. Sports, other stuff, they're okay.
Thank you very much. Having no other public comment, I'm gonna close the public comment section now. And I'm gonna bring it back to item L8. Ms. Zadra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have had many phone calls and emails from people who have concerns about actions that are happening over at the animal control services, where the Humane Society is teamed for cohesive and humane operations. And so Bonnie and I have actually visited and she's got kind of a background for us. If you'd come up and share that, Bonnie, you'll remember that there was a bond issue in 2002 that was just wholeheartedly supported by this community for these operations. And the city and county have been working together for quite some time to make the operations what everyone envisioned and expected from that bond issue. And we're definitely paying for it. And I'm concerned from reports that I'm getting that operations have significantly changed over there. And since Bonnie is kind of a... And the Humane Society are there as kind of co-partners in bringing humane and just care and treatment of animals in our community, I thought she could give us some background. There's a large contingency that is really concerned, both financially as well as policies that are underfoot over there, that what's happening is not at all what the citizens voted for in 2002. So Bonnie, if you could give us your involvement and the partner, kind of what I call the partnership relationship and the concerns that you all are experiencing as well?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. I prepared a few slides and there are actually handouts that you will probably get later from the clerk that provide some background information. I am Bonnie Brown, the Executive Director of Nevada Humane Society. Nevada Humane Society is an independent nonprofit and we have a contract with Washoe County to provide specific services. And those include that we take owner-surrendered pets from county residents. We also perform adoption services. Animal Services does not perform adoption, so if a citizen wishes to adopt a pet that's past their stray hold, we perform that service. And we also take pets along with many other community rescue groups from Washoe County at the end of their stray hold period. Otherwise, there would be really not a lot of options for them and most would be euthanized. I'd like to share with you our adoption statistics. Now, in spite of the very tough economic challenges this community and every community faces, we've been able to increase pet adoptions over the past five years pretty dramatically. And while I don't have 2011 up there for you to see, we are on track to again increase pet adoptions this year. Now, all of these pet adoptions and not only the work of Nevada Humane Society, but other rescue groups in the community, like the SPCA of Northern Nevada and Pet Network, have led to a dramatic decrease in the number of animals losing their lives. And while I was not here in 2002, I've had many citizens tell me that was their goal and their objective in voting for the particular item that created the shelter and the inter-local agreement. The result of the adoptions and also efforts of Nevada Humane Society and other animal rescue agencies to reduce the number of pets coming into area shelters has given our community a great save rate. And truly, we've become an envy of many other communities across the nation. You can see there, the national average save rate is only 58%. The statistics are from 2009, but that's the latest data that's available. Last year, we had a very enviable 91% save rate for dogs and cats. This slide shows another way that those of us who work in the field of animal welfare measure our success or failure, as the case may be, and that is deaths of animals in shelters per thousand residents. And you can see in Washoe County, it's 3.3 with the national average is more than double that. Now, well, pet adoptions are absolutely a feel-good thing, what with the life-saving and the bond that people form with their companion animals. It also has an economic impact on our community. Now, these stats that I'm showing you here are actually national averages. However, it's still pretty clear that adopted pets have a beneficial economic impact on our community. And this slide takes those numbers and multiplies it times the number of pets adopted out at Nevada Humane Society last year. So if you begin to look at this over the course of five years' worth of pet adoptions, the cumulative effect is really pretty substantial. And this does not mention things like sales tax generated in relation to pet adoption or other economic multipliers that you could consider. Volunteers, I've read in a few different places that Nevada ranks low in terms of volunteer activities, but I can tell you that is not true here, at least in relation to animal welfare issues. We have an extraordinary number of volunteers, as you can see from this slide, and they've grown dramatically over the past several years. Everyone who loves animals knows the vital importance of spay and neuter. And of course, we spay and neuter every pet before adoption. But additionally, the... Our clinic provides spay-neuter services to people who cannot afford to do it themselves. And we do that both in our clinic last year totaling almost 9,300 pets. But we also work with local veterinarians and local foundations to provide voucher program for people to get pets spayed and neutered. Now, I had to add something that would bring a little levity to this serious subject, and this is a postcard that we sent out to every residence in Sun Valley in an effort to promote our free spay-neuter campaign for cats there. A great many cats come in from that particular area and this was just part of our effort to get those animals fixed so we could reduce intake at area shelters and reduce costs. Now, we do not provide wellness care in our clinic because we do not want to compete with the local veterinarians. However, in these extraordinarily tough economic times, we occasionally come across people, often elderly people, who cannot afford veterinary care for a beloved pet. That pet can be great comfort to them and they can actually be faced with losing that companionship. So last year, we provided just over $40,000 worth of services to people who couldn't afford it otherwise. Our Free Animal Help desk responded to over 20,000 calls from residents last year, people with questions about animals, folks seeking assistance, a very wide range of different topics. Now, because of our high save rate in this community, we've received a lot of national recognition, especially within the animal welfare field. And the list of conferences there is only a partial list of conferences to which Nevada Humane Society staff has been asked to come and speak about our successful programs. This community's success has been the topic of articles in many national publications, including these. And visitors from animal shelters and government agencies from across the country have come to learn about how Nevada Humane Society and Washoe County Regional Animal Services have worked together to save lives. In closing, I'd just like to say that Nevada Humane Society is an independent nonprofit. We receive less than 2% of our operating budget in fee for service from Washoe County. And for that reason, we would like to thank not only all of you, but all of our volunteers, donors, the other animal rescue groups in the community, and the citizens of the community that make the life-saving that I've just talked about possible.
Thank you, Bonnie. What we're hearing, and you and I have had this conversation, and I've had it, as I mentioned before, with many people who've come to me with concerns that either volunteer there or have family members who are involved, that operations are changing dramatically on the animal services side. And at risk is the five-day stray policy and the unwillingness that apparently your operation is hearing the same thing, that animals are being... They call it euthanized, which I find just to be such an incredible exaggeration of the word. The... To euthanize is really to kindly put an animal out of its pain, and that's not what's happening. They're killing these animals without giving you and the SPCA and other volunteer agencies the opportunity to come in and secure those animals and get them to adopted households. Are you seeing a threat there as well?
I'm hearing a lot of feedback along those lines. So far, we have not had difficulty pulling animals. However, there is a great deal of concern, and I'm hearing it too, from many supporters and volunteers and just a fairly large number of people who are expressing these concerns. And I think those concerns in part stem from the fact that back in March, code changes were presented to the Board of County Commissioners and those code changes have never come back. And a part, they had, I think, both dramatic potential savings for taxpayers and also life-saving impact for animals. And one of those would have been to ensure rescue group access to animals at the end of their five-day stray hold. Now, even if you don't like animals, that's important because otherwise, those animals are destroyed at taxpayer expense and the bodies are cremated at taxpayer expense. So it's just prudent fiscally to allow and to do all you can to facilitate rescue group access. And that was one of the key components of the code changes. There were also others that would have empowered animal control officers to respond to animal cruelty effectively. We recently got two kittens that had... One of them had their ears cut off and both had been splashed with acid. And all animal control could do was cajole the man into surrendering these animals. This would have been addressed by those code changes, where officers could have had the power to more effectively deal with animal cruelty. And again, if you don't care about animals, this matters because people who are cruel to animals often go on to commit crimes against humans. The FBI even uses that as a marker in their work for folks who have violent propensity and pose a danger to all of us. Also, they would have addressed kennel permitting, which would have made it cheaper and easier for residents who are responsibly caring for animals to get a kennel. And there were other important code changes as well that had huge support. There were literally hundreds of people at the meeting and yet, in spite of the overwhelming public support, these have never come back.
And why has... Have you heard from the county commission why they, since March, have not taken action on any of these?
Oh, the only communication or answer we've been able to get on it is that it's not to be brought back presently, so that's...
And I know you've heard, as we have, and in fact, Councilman Sfraza has brought this forward previously as well, there is suspicion, concern, that the dollars that the taxpayers agreed to pay to be assessed for this humane operation and... the taxpayers agreed to pay to be assessed for this humane operation and be used just at the animal control services level may be being reallocated to other portions of the county's budget. Are you experiencing any reports or experiences that would validate those claims?
I'm hearing that same thing, but again, much of it is just information that's coming from various citizens and county employees even who are concerned about it.
So, Mr. Mayor, Bonnie was kind enough to find the time to be able to share with you some of the things that she has had discussion with many. And I know that I've gotten an enormous number of emails and phone calls and conversations with people who have concerns. I really believe that this is just one more example of an abuse of direction that the county received and relationships that we entered into with them. We've got the interlocal agreement, and the citizens voted for this operation, knowing that it would be humane treatment for the animals. I'm not sure that the referendum ever used the word "no kill," but the intent certainly was there in the resident's mind. And I really believe that we need to take the county to task on this and make sure that they respond accordingly, that they provide the services and the level of support that they voted for back in 2002. And it's our responsibility as their partner in ensuring that they administer this properly.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, I'm very passionate about this issue, being the councilperson who spearheaded this ballot initiative, and I'm outraged. I pulled my property tax bill, there's a specific line item here for the animal shelter operations. It's not just rumored, Councilwoman Zadra, it's right on the county's website that they plan to, and again, it's very tricky the way they word it because they're giving the public the impression that they're reducing the tax rate. They're not reducing the tax rate at all, they're just diverting funds that the voters approved for the purposes of an animal-controlled shelter and putting it in other places. And I think that's a violation of the voters' trust. I think the city council should move forward with an injunction against the county on behalf of the taxpayers of everyone in this community, because that's not what the voters voted on when they approved this animal shelter ballot question. Secondly, it comes down to an issue where I think this is one example where the government should get out of the way. There's examples, I have emails of the county overstepping their bounds from everything, from what the Humane Society is doing as far as trying to do adoption fairs to the staff over there, Mr. Mayor. I would really like to see the Humane Society, I'd like to go on a dual track here, come back and propose operating the whole facility. I think the Humane Society, you guys have done a great job, you've been nationally recognized. I think you guys could do it more efficiently, but also, you're in the business of the humane treatment of animals. I think when we established this shelter, Mr. Mayor, the intention was for the adoption rates to go up. We had a very unsanitary shelter before the voters approved the bond question. So I'd like to see us do a dual track here. I think that, I'd like to see the Humane Society go back to their board and see if they can pencil out the numbers to do this more efficiently and take over the operations. But secondly, I think we do need to file the injunction. I think if the money isn't going to be used for the purposes that it was intended to, that everybody in Washoe County should see a rebate on their tax bill, because that's exactly what's happening. There's too much money coming in for the operation side. And part of that, quite frankly, is because the Humane Society has run such an efficient organization. They have a ton of volunteers out there who go out and get the animals adopted, and Bonnie, you had said it in their presentation, but I think before this goes on any further, Mr. Mayor, that we should do a resolution if we have to and present that to the county commission, but also have the city attorney's office come back as soon as possible, because I think they're in violation of the interlocal agreement, the trust of the taxpayers here in Washoe County. I know we can only do it on behalf of the City of Reno residents, because that's our jurisdiction, but I would like to see us do that on behalf of the taxpayers here in our city.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just a quick background. One of the reasons I think Reno has an issue with this is what people have to remember is Reno and Sparks both agreed to give up three cents of our property tax to do this. So we gave up three cents of our property tax in that, so that money should be coming back to us if the county's going to do it. It wasn't, so the county could move that over. What they're saying is the voters voted to approve up to three cents, so they could reduce that as much as they want to, and they could, but it should go back, as Councilwoman Farazza and Councilwoman Zadra are saying, it should go back to the taxpayers. What I find unusual about this is it's the Republicans on the county commission who are pushing this to not rebate that back, and it's the Democrat over there who's saying something different. So I find that very unusual. But the City of Reno has a stake in this, because we gave up three cents of our property tax to do this, and so did the City of Sparks, Mr. Mayor.
So, as you know, Mr. Mayor, we need to have council's endorsement to allow staff more, you know, more than two hours to move forward with some of these issues. But I really do think that pets are what make us as human beings humane. They're really what make our lives what they are and help us be better at our work. And so we need to step up to the plate and correct the abuse of funding that is apparent over there and do what the citizens asked for in 2002, return it to what their expectation was.
Okay, we can put that on the future agenda, Adam, and we can go from there.
Mr. Mayor, I can make a motion. Can we make a motion on it today?
I think it's worded where we...
It's an action, Adam, you can. Go ahead.
So, I do, an injunction is an absolutely great idea. So I move that we move forward with an injunction and that we put the county on notice and that we evaluate what is occurring and how that is different from what the original intent was and bring the appropriate corrections to the table.
Okay, go ahead, second.
A second for discussion, just a few modifications. I think the injunction, they haven't taken action yet, the county commission, on the diversion of the funds. But I'd like the city attorneys to research whether we can file an injunction before they take that action, because, but also, I think we need to be specific, Councilwoman Zadra, what we want to happen in that injunction, whether we want the taxpayers to be rebated the amount of the tax rate that's not going to the animal facilities, but also, I would like to see, as part of the motion, that the Humane Society look at their numbers and their operations to see if they can present, I know we're not the governing body over the animal control shelter, but the majority of the residents live in the City of Reno. I'd like the Humane Society to have the opportunity to come back as quickly as possible, maybe our December meeting, Bonnie, to see if you guys could actually take over and run the entire operation. And maybe we have to go out to a citizens' initiative, Mr. Mayor, to make that happen, but from the feedback I'm hearing, I think that's possible.
And there are multiple other groups out there, you know, the SPCA and others. So my intent in the vagueness of the motion, although I don't have any problem with the editing it, was to leave it open enough that staff could really identify multiple options for us to take a look at, so we could go with the best.
Legal counsel?
Tracy Chaserino, City Attorney's Office. Because the word injunction was used as a singular type of legal remedy, we would request from the City Attorney's Office that you broaden that to allow us to research all claims and if other appropriate claims in relation to possible breach of the interlocal agreement, et cetera, are appropriate, that we also have authority for that.
Right.
Mr. Dort, you have something? Okay, I have a motion, second. Any further discussion?
Point of order.
Oh, yes, Mr. Denae, wish this to speak. I'll give you two minutes, Mr. Denae.
No, I think it says three minutes right here, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to be contentious.
I know that, but do it in two.
Then that means everybody else gets only two minutes the rest of the meeting. That's the only way it should be.
Okay, I'll give you, I'll give you three, Mr. Denae, you wasted ten minutes.
And I know, and I don't want to be contentious, but you know the rules, Mr. Mayor.
I know that, go ahead.
Why did I have to say point of order and something to disturb in the operation, and I'm not? And I just want to say a few things about this. First of all, I'm Sam Denae, the Encyclopedia Reno Government, and I guess this talk about consolidation between Washoe County Commission and Reno City Council's not going to happen. I have to give you a disclaimer right away. I did get my beloved pit bull guard dog from this rescue center, from the animal center, and I was surprised. I'm reading this agenda item, and I thought this was going to be confrontational, but, and I'm glad that Mr. Farazza brought it to the point, because even before that, I wasn't sure which side, I thought you were going to come down hard on these people, but you're trying to defend them, and I think this is one of the best operating organizations in the city, in the county, in Northern Nevada. They do a great job. I'm sure they have problems like, even city council has a few problems now and then. So I'm sure there's problems in here and there. No, he's shaking his head. City council has no problems. All right, delete that item. At any rate, I'm adamantly in favor of this injunction and whatever else you do. The county commission should not be playing bait and switch with our taxes. I'm glad that was brought up, too. And, oh, and by the way, I'm very glad that Mr. Zadra stood by the guns and moved this up on the agenda, because this is a once-in-a-lifetime chance for the citizens to see their government in action. I'll bet, raise the hands, how many people have ever even seen their government in action? I'll bet you maybe two hands would go up, maybe five. And you get to see the Sam Denae Show two times, what are the chances? That's about it. Oh, and to put it in perspective, this operation is at least, at least as well-run as the RSCBA, Art Town, the RTC, I could go on and on, the Airport Board. This operation is doing at least as well as all of those organizations and just about any others I can name, if you give me, well, I only did take two minutes. What do you think of that?
I thought that's what it would be. Thank you very much. Having no other public comment, I'll close it off. Excuse me, Mr. President.
Yeah, just by way of clarification, as I understand, the city attorney will do the research and then bring it back to us before we file any lawsuit against the county. And then the only footnote I'd ask is that maybe a letter from this council, Mr. Mayor, that you would sign that incorporates all the comments that council members made to request rebate in taxes, et cetera. And that gives us the attorney to do the research, and maybe we can get a response from the county. Maybe they'll do it, maybe they won't, but I'd like to at least give them the courtesy of sending a letter.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor, I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I have a short presentation that I want to make here today. I'm not going to go to the podium, I'm going to stay here at my desk. The National Association of State Budget Officers, NASBO, is the professional organization of state finance officers that advances state budget practices. NASBO has been active for more than 60 years and is a nonpartisan, nonprofit, research and educational organization that is affiliated with the National Governors Association. Its membership is composed of directors of state finance departments, the state's chief budget officers, and their deputies. As the chief financial advisor to our nation's governors, NASBO members are active participants in the public policy discussion at the state level. I'm proud to announce today that our city manager, Andrew Klinger, has been unanimously elected as a life member of NASBO, National Association of State Budget Directors, by the executive committee for his integrity and record accomplishments. Mr. P. Now, at this time, we're going to pick up the speed a little bit, maybe. Doubt it, but here we go. Presentation. Chief Hernandez. We don't have to pick up the speed, chief. I didn't mean it that way.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council, city manager Klinger. It's for the record, it's my pleasure to be here. For the record, it's Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief. I think it's only fitting that on this day, the last patient that was released from the hospital from the Reno Air Race event occurred this morning, that we recognize those individuals and those groups of first responders that mitigated that event. On Friday, September 16th, just after 5:00 p.m., this community and the community of first responders reacted to the Reno Air Race disaster. Hundreds were injured and over 50 patients were assessed, treated, and transported within 65 minutes. This event and its response demonstrates the value of pre-planning, training, and working as a community of responders to meet a challenge. It is my belief that no single entity could have managed this event alone. However, working as a community of responders, EMS, fire, law enforcement, and the many volunteers who came off the grandstands that afternoon clearly lessened the impact of that tragedy. Today is my honor to recognize those members of the Reno Fire Department and other key agencies that worked together during this disaster. I will be awarding the chief's commendation medal to members of the Reno Fire Department, and I will be awarding the chief's commendation certificate to those other key agencies. I will begin with those individuals that were assigned to the air race event on that day, starting with Division A Captain Dan Tilsey, firefighter David Blondfield. If you could please...
Excuse me, chief, as you hear your name, please come for...
Yeah, please come up and...
Please come forward, and then when you get, come by this council chamber so we can shake your hand and congratulate and thank you.
Division B Reno Fire Captain Joe Dolan. Saw him earlier, there he is. Firefighter Glenn McKinnon, assigned to Brush 7 on that day. Reno Fire Operator Gary Snyder. Reno firefighter Jonathan Moberly. Assigned to Brush 9 Reno Fire Operator David Rutherford. I saw him earlier, there he is. Reno firefighter Ryan Carr. In working the emergency control at the tower that afternoon, we had representatives from different agencies. Working as the aircraft spotter, Reno Logistics Officer Kenny DeBurg. Reno firefighter Captain Dennis Jacobson as the fire branch director. And the incident commander at that time was battalion chief, Reno Battalion Chief Tim Spencer. Responding after the event occurred, off-site were the crews from Engine 9 and Sted. Reno Fire Captain James Beach. Reno firefighter Alex Aldana. Reno firefighter Jennifer Rowan. Reno firefighter Tony Shaw. The crew from Engine 13 Reno Fire Captain Joe Nishakita. Reno Fire Operator Steven Suiak. Reno firefighter Richard Hart. Reno firefighter Steven Yabu. And off-duty Reno firefighter Clinton Hayes, who was in the stands that afternoon. Other key agencies were the Peavine Volunteer Fire Department, Coal Springs Volunteer Fire Department, Silver Lake Volunteer Fire Department, Lemon Valley Volunteer Fire Department, the Galena Volunteer Fire Department. And a person who deserves special attention was our very own Michelle Anderson. She arrived with one of the battalion chiefs early into the incident, and she assured that public information was a priority, not only to the community, she worked with the assigned public information officer, and she also kept key members of the Reno staff, the city manager, police chief, myself, informed as to the actions on a day-to-day basis throughout the first, probably the first 10 days of the event, just a yeoman's job. Thank you. Chaplain, Reno Fire Chaplain Steve Arben, who's not here today, Reno Police Department. Job well done. And I believe the capstone of this response clearly was the ambulance provider for this community, Remza. And I know they're here, and I'd like them to please stand up and be recognized and join us up here. I don't think that... I don't think that we could duplicate that level of response if we tried. Over 50 patients in 65 minutes or less is just an incredible achievement. Washoe County Sheriff's Department. Come on, Marshall. Don't be afraid. Chief Dolan from the Airport Authority Fire Department. And lastly, some of our federal providers, and I'm not sure if they're here today, the U.S. Forester Service had a presence with their brush trucks, Bureau of Land Management, the Nevada Air Guard, and lastly, the Nevada Highway Patrol. I know that I speak for the Reno Fire Department, but I think I speak for all the responders that are here today. It's an honor and a privilege to serve this community, and it was quite a feat to respond to that event, and I know that our collective effort helped mitigate the damage that occurred that day. If I've omitted any group, if I've omitted any group or any individuals, it's not by intent, it's just mere omission on my part. Chief Pitts would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mike. And for the record, Steve Pitts, on behalf of the men and women of the Reno Police Department. What an incredible group, and look at this diversity that responded that day. Let's give them a hand. Thank you very much for your service. With your permission, Mr. Mayor, just a few comments. Honorable mayor, Mr. Manager, city council, chief Mike Hernandez, and those recognized today, the men and women of the Reno Police Department want to congratulate you for your courage and service. Most importantly, today, our message is to the families and our community. To the families of those lost, seriously injured, both physically and psychologically, we cannot bear to understand the full impact of this tragedy. But I can tell you what we have learned as a community, a new courage demonstrated by those impacted, as witnessed by their stories. I know the mayor had visited with several of them, and some of you, and council did, and I know that some of those that served did, and there's many tremendous stories and lessons to be learned through their resilience. And that we have a tremendous community in Reno and Washoe County who mobilized to support public safety and all those affected. I did not plan to present awards to members of the Reno Police Department for the courage or determination that day, for the work done by the men and women in public safety was supported by an incredible community who came together and placed themselves above self in the air race tragedy. When you look at the numbers, as Mike indicated, ladies and gentlemen, they're staggering. Nurses, doctors, advocates, members of our business and private sector, citizens, volunteers from every organization in this community imaginable, left the safety of their homes or workplaces, coaching their children's sporting events, and maybe the security of their homes to serve that day. These men and women did not ask why, they asked where. We have compiled a list of over 75 people that both Mike and I have identified, and we've sent letters of commendation to those individuals, and they will be recognized at a RPD annual awards ceremony in the spring of 2010. While reflecting on this tragedy and other recent unfortunate events, and how public safety personnel in our community responded with an incredible sense of purpose, I thought it might be important to revisit a few fundamental questions. What really is your individual motivation as a human being for action? What is it that drives you in your life every day, today? What value do you add to the organizations you're in, to your local government, to your community, and obviously, your families? There's strong evidence that suggests that renewing our clarity and purpose and acting upon these things in alignment with other factors is what actually occurred in this tragedy. Not every day in many people's lives give them the opportunity to make a significant difference for others, let alone save lives. Many say opportunities like that must be horrible. I hear it, Mike, and I'm sure these men and women up here hear it. Must be, it's a tough job, right? Can't believe how you handle that situation. But I have to tell you, I think it's a blessing for those that were affected. L.B. Calman, an author, wrote that faith grows in storms, and faith is the ability to bring the unseen into plain view. It makes things seem possible even when they appear initially impossible, and it's often the atmosphere of conflict that faith finds its most fertile ground. The path of this tragedy has been one of sorrow, suffering, healing, hardships, and some victories. Yet in all these things, we came together to serve and learned incredible things about ourselves individually, and probably the most important lesson, the power of a community. In closing, and on behalf of the men and women of the Reno Police Department and public safety in general, I want to thank this council and our community for allowing us the opportunity to serve, to develop new relationships in the process of serving, and for making it clear to us, as our community and our governmental leadership, that you'll stand behind us when there's a storm. Thank you.
Once again, it's a privilege to serve, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, and ladies and gentlemen, and all the members here, thank y'all for everything you did. It was remarkable to see what you did and how you did it and the way you handled it. You did a magnificent job. I was on the scene for a while shortly after it happened, and I'll tell you something. You people have your act together, you know what you're doing, you're well-trained, and this community is very, very proud of what y'all did during this crisis. And we salute you, and we thank you very, very much for your dedication and hard work. Thank y'all very much. Any councilman, ladies? Mr. Guston?
Just very briefly, I'm glad that council and we took the time to have these people introduced and come forward because what you're looking at this morning, short, tall, young, a little bit older, but, you know, male-
Watch the way you refer to the older.
Male, female, you know, Mr. Mayor, this is the face of heroes. They won't admit it, but these are heroes. That's what they look like in the city of Reno and northern Nevada. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Zadra?
Mr. Mayor, I think that the community needs to know that we didn't drag our heels in recognizing our service providers. We actually listened to their recommendation. I was sitting in on one of the briefings probably Monday morning, and these gentlemen right here and women said, "It's not about us at all. Do not give any thought at all to what you're saying we did for you. It's all about the victims." And it was appropriate for us to listen to these people who knew the priorities, that the recognition needed to be with the victims first and their families, because they knew that we'd come back and recognize them the way they deserve it.
There's one gentleman in the audience there, Mr. Houghton. Did you have something to say?
I think on behalf of our organization, the only thing-
Please identify yourself on the record.
Mike Houghton from the Air Races. The only thing I think that we can say is thank you. It's a pleasure and an honor to be associated in a community this fine with these types of folks that pull together and do the job. So thank you all very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, what I'd like for you to do is, as you come around, we would like to shake hands and say thank you. So if you'd come around here, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Good job. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Good job, man. Good job, man. That's all right. Good work, man. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes?
I do want to say as part of this that I think that the Air Races did a great job in just making sure that everyone was out there at the right time. They were always concerned about safety, and they were out there. It wasn't, the reason it happened is because they had the people on site, and I think that we also ought to make sure, I think that as a council, we want to support the Air Races in doing what we can do to make sure that this happens again, that the Air Races happen again next year, and whatever we need to do, we will help you do that. Because I really appreciate you making sure that we had the people out there and that they were trained in what your services were, and that helped tremendously by having the personnel out there on site.
The National Air Race Association was very organized that day, had all the proper people in place and everything, and just as you said, Ms. Zadra, because of their planning and dedication, that's what really helped us by having everybody in place to respond. And we thank y'all, Mr. Houghton and the Air Race Association. Whatever we can do to help going forward with this, with the Air Races, we want to do whatever we can.
And one more thing, Mr. Mayor. I think you should be congratulated too. I know you spent a lot of personal time on this out there during the tragedy, but also visiting with people in the hospital, making sure people got home. You put a lot of personal effort into this. I think a lot of the positive reports that we've seen from people saying that how they were treated here was just phenomenal, had a lot to do with you and how you handled representing the city, and I know you've visited a lot of these families a lot of times in the hospital, and I want to thank you for that too. You gave the city a really wonderful name-
Well, thank you very much.
-after the tragedy.
Thank you. All right, now we'll go to Adam D. Two, Employee of the Quarter Award.
Good afternoon, mayor, council, city manager. My name is Chris Good. I'm with the city manager's office in the Department of Neighborhood Services, and I'm here to present the Employee of the Quarter Awards for the first quarter of the current fiscal year. That's fiscal year 11-12. And joining me is Vice Chair of the Employee Recognition Committee, Karen Rudy. These awards are based on the four Rs and have been for some time. Those four Rs that we recognize as values for our organization are respect, responsibility, responsiveness, and results. And these awards come in four categories, categories across departments, four Rs for the community, four Rs for outstanding results, and for safety. So today, we're going to recognize nine employees. They've been nominated by their peers, and as I bring them up, I'm going to quote from what their peers said about them in the nominating process. So let's get started, and as I name, call your name, please come up to the podium. Our first award goes to a team of three employees, Jason Bogle, Kathy Sanchez, and Jack Wilson from the Public Works Department. Please come on up. This award is the Employee of the Quarter Award for four Rs across departments. These three worked as a special events team out of Public Works this year. They worked with various departments, including the city manager's office, Parks, Recreation and Community Services, the Reno Police Department, and others, of course. They are recognized for providing appropriate public safety infrastructure while keeping costs in check throughout this whole last season of special events. They are appreciated for being available whenever needed. They are problem solvers with great working knowledge of resources. Whatever you needed at the last minute, these folks could get it for you. They were first on-site prior to events opening to ensure the right setup was done early in the morning, and then they worked through the whole event, through the whole weekends. They assisted others even when tired after working those long hours. And of course, as with all of our employees, they acted with integrity. So thank you for serving as role models, not only for your coworkers but for the community and for being outstanding City of Reno employees and representatives.
Come on around. Oh, you want to wait until they all get there?
We have a total of nine people here. Our next up is Lieutenant Amy Newman from the Reno Police Department. Please come up to the podium. She is being recognized in two categories, and as far as we can tell, that's the first time this has ever happened in our Employee of the Quarter program. The two categories are four Rs across departments and four Rs for outstanding results. And again, this goes back to the special events season. She presented outstanding coordination of special events through this last special events season. She worked with city staff and vendors, local law enforcement, not only the Reno Police Department, but other agencies as well. Her work helped make the events fun and viable for the vendors and, of course, safe for the public. She showed leadership and responsiveness during critical situations. She was integral in the restructuring of the event's security and staffing, and she showed real leadership with the whole Beer Garden idea on Virginia Street, which I think everybody agrees was a real success this last season. It's due in large part to her efforts. She put in hours of work, persuaded a lot of people for new approaches towards special events. Her diplomatic approach and consensus building really made things happen. She showed fairness and balance in decision-making and excellent problem-solving capabilities. So thank you, Lieutenant Newman, for your dedication, your hard work, your ability to face challenges and overcome them, and being an exceptional City of Reno employee and representative. Thank you, Lieutenant. Up next is April Rolfe from our Parks, Recreation and Community Services Department. April is being recognized by her peers as an employee of the quarter under four Rs for community. This is in recognition for her work with the Military Sports Camp. It was in support of disabled veterans and injured service members. It was a multi-day camp at various locations, featuring various activities like whitewater rafting, scuba diving, rock climbing, wheelchair rugby, adaptive cycling, and land sailing. She really took initiative. She secured the funding. This event would not have happened without April behind the helm. She put it together, created it out of thin air, found the funding, coordinated with outside organizations. The event honored service members and veterans. It also acknowledged the 10th anniversary of the 9/11 events. So thank you, April, for serving as a role model to your coworkers in the community, for showing a willingness to help others, and for being an exceptional City of Reno employee and representative. Next up is John Baker from Public Works. Please come on up to the podium. John is being recognized under Employee of the Quarter, four Rs for outstanding results. This is for, John saw a need and worked to ensure it was taken care of. Left and right, he does this. He took the lead on several projects, including the Flashing Yellow Arrow Project and wrapping up a three-year upgrade for equipment dealing with fiber optics and cable and cabinet signal equipment. Ninety percent of traffic signals will now communicate through fiber optic cable. He leads by example, he's dedicated to do his job, and he makes sure the job gets done. So thank you for serving as a role model for your coworkers, for your hard work in achieving outstanding results, and for being an outstanding City of Reno employee and representative. Next up is Tim Poyer, I should say, Tim Poyer, from Public Works Department, the Fleet Department. Please come on up, Tim. He's being recognized as an employee of the quarter under four Rs for outstanding results. He works on the street sweeper fleet, work above and beyond the call of duty. Tim works diligently on the street sweepers and the snowplows, keeping them operational mechanically to make sure that they get the job done out there on those busy streets and that they don't have to come in halfway through getting the job done to get repairs done at the shop. He does not only routine maintenance, but he also completes a full check to make sure there are no additional problems with the equipment, and he keeps his advisors informed on every step of the way. He keeps the fleet on the streets so the work gets done out there nonstop. So thank you, Tim, for serving as a role model to your coworkers, for your hard work- hard work each and every day, and for being an exceptional City of Reno employee and representative. Yes, two more to go. Our next up is Jamie Schroeder from the City Manager's Office. She's sitting over there in the clerks area this afternoon. She is being recognized by her peers as an Employee of the Quarter under four Rs for outstanding results. Again, this goes back to the special events season. She became the Special Events Program Manager just as the season came into swing, and she embraced her new responsibilities with her incredible work ethic. I can speak personally, any of us who work with Jamie or have worked with Jamie can attest to her incredible work ethic. Her problem-solving skills, she rises to the occasion, her ability to reach consensus with a wide variety of stakeholders. She was instrumental in implementing new guidelines, including that Beer Garden idea again. She put together a new staffing structure which allowed greater participation in the special events while using fewer City of Reno resources, so it cost the public less to put on better events. Just a tremendous equation that she put together. She worked tirelessly. She made herself available to staff, to organizers, to stakeholders at all hours, and she brought fresh energy and perspective to the special events season this last summer. So thank you, Jamie, for your dedication, your hard work, your ability to face challenges and overcome them, and you're showing an exceptional City of Reno employee representative and representative to the community. Thank you, Jamie. And finally, this afternoon, the award Employee of the Quarter to Detective Eric Stroshine. Eric Stroshine from the Reno Police Department is receiving the Employee of the Quarter under four Rs for outstanding results. He demonstrated knowledge, sharing, and willingness to assist with the Sex Crimes and Child Abuse Unit even though he was rotated back to the Patrol Division. He was instrumental in training and mentoring less-tenured detectives, resulting in this unit seeing an increase in arrests for child abuse and sexual assault. He inspires others to a higher level of competence and a commitment for the greater good for the citizens of this community. So thank you, Detective, for making a difference, for sharing your knowledge to mentor others, for your hard work, and for being an exceptional City of Reno employee and representative. As they circle and shake the hands of the City Council and the City Manager, let me just say once again, take a look at this group, this collection of talented inventive city employees, and say thank you for your dedicated service. Thank you.
Chief Pitts.
Yes, sir.
Special Health and Staff for the Development Management of Comprehensive Public Safety Wellness. Chief Pitts, you're in charge.
Good afternoon. For the record, Steve Pitts, on behalf of the men and women of the Reno Police Department, and Mr. Mayor and Council, I want to thank you for your patience today in these award ceremonies, but they're so critical for us to award people, obviously, that serve within our government and our business here in the city and those in the community. What I'd ask is Mr. Dan Guston to come forward, please. Dr. James Greenwald, Ms. Jackie Cox, and Division Chief Tamara Lopes from the Reno Fire Department. In the fall of 2008, Dr. James Greenwald met with the command staff at the Reno Police Department and proposed a new approach to wellness intervention for public safety personnel. This approach was really a hypothesis at the time and had the potential to impact heart disease, diabetes, and stroke in public safety personnel, all big game changers for people's lives impacted by those diseases. Dr. Greenwald's hypothesis was that specific advanced testing, behavioral and lifestyle changes, and close medical supervision could provide for unheard-of decreases in these illnesses in public safety personnel and the costs associated with them. The Reno Police Department obtained funding to support the wellness initiative in 2008, and with the support of Councilman Dan Guston, he became aware of these possibilities, and he also requested and designated funding to support our efforts. Mr. Guston has been a powerful but very silent champion of this effort. By the end of 2009, the Reno Police Department had conducted the first case study, which included 15 police officers. The medical and wellness interventions in the first case study showed significant improvements in quality of life and significant reductions in associated medical risks which these officers entered the program with. In 2009, Division Chief Tamara Lopes became very involved in the program, bringing firefighters into two more case studies over the next two years. Division Chief Lopes has been instrumental in developing improvements to the original model, and as of yesterday, I called her yesterday because we check in with her. She's like my sister, by the way, ladies and gentlemen. I've known her for 25 years, and I love her like a sister, by the way. She was meeting with local cardiologists and our wellness, the current people that cover our annual physicals, to look for better diagnostic testing that would fit into this model that we've created. Mrs. Jackie Cox, if I may, has taken Greenwald's idea and formulated a practical and systems approach to make it work within the medical profession, and also to educate those in public safety about the importance of the model. And for those of you that know Dr. Greenwald, he's also known as Greenie, I've always referred to him. He's been a mentor of mine for some 30 years. He's an ideas guy, and he's created many ideas, as the mayor's shaking his head, that have impacted the University of Nevada-Reno and this community at a very high level. Jackie has championed this initiative locally and on the national level. Honorable Mayor and Council, this program has touched the lives of approximately 45 public safety personnel. It has been a big game changer for them. Their quality of life is better, and their understanding of the importance to take responsibility for their wellness has been solidified. In closing, when you look at 45 personnel impacted, the 45 personnel impacted, excuse me, many were at high risk for the diseases mentioned earlier, and also the potential for medical retirements associated with those diseases. My understanding is the average cost for one medical retirement in the state of Nevada is $1.2 million. Therefore, there could be an argument presented that this program in the last three and a half years may have saved local government and state government some $50 million. Please join me in thanking Councilman Guston, Dr. Greenwald, Mrs. Jackie Cox, and Division Chief Tamara Lopes for their vision, because it truly was a vision, and their commitment. And each plaque basically says the same thing. I'll read that very quickly. "For your vision, support, and dedication to the Public Safety Wellness Initiative, this initiative has provided wellness interventions to dozens of public safety employees and improved the quality of their lives significantly. Your actions embrace the highest morals of service to others and have demonstrated humbly and silently your commitment to the men and women who risk their lives each and every day for others." And there's a quote from Adelaide Stevenson that I thought was absolutely appropriate. "What counts now is what we stand for. Who leads us is less important than what leads us, what convictions and what courage and what faith we follow." Thank you very much. Mr. Guston? Thank you very much.
Bob, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
We really appreciate this.
Identify yourself for the record.
I'm Jim Greenwald. We really appreciate this. Things like this don't happen without the leadership of people like you. We brought you all a present. We took, we did a presentation to the fire chiefs in Atlanta. It's been very well received. We've got a DVD of that presentation that'll explain the program to you, so we have copies of this for you, and really, it's such an honor to be taking care of your people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Guston?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I got the presentation, but six other people on this dais deserve as much credit as I because we all decided to move forward with this, and it was because the money that Dr. Greenwald needed, the council voted unanimously to do it. So thank you for the award. I do appreciate it, but there should be six other people getting one also.
Well, thank you. All right, now let's go back to item B, cash dispersalments. Mr. Hashep? None? Mr. Dorch or Guston? Nothing? Okay, shall we entertain a motion? Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we go down to the consent agenda. I have one person that wants to speak on a couple of items here. Do you have any items you want to pull for discussion? C1 and 2. Mr. Dorch.
E3, Mr. Mayor.
D3? E, D3? E3. Ms. Razzie?
E4, Mr. Mayor.
E4? Any others?
She pulled, he pulled already.
E3's already pulled. E12? Yes.
I didn't hear Councilwoman Zadrez for the, okay, C1 and 2, and then technically 3 and 3 as well.
Excuse me?
3 as well, it's second-hand.
E3. Yeah, okay. All right, Mr. Wilcox. Excuse me one minute, Mr. Wilcox, before you do. Any other items to pull? Okay, y'all want to give me a motion?
Which ones you want to hear?
Well, he's speaking on the ones y'all pulled.
Okay. Move to approve the rest, then, Mr. Mayor?
All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, your number's already been pulled, so that's why we're going ahead and, we haven't taken action on yours yet.
Okay, thank you. I'm Richard Wilcox. I appreciate your time very much. I drove up here from the Bay Area today. We, I'm just really seeking that we can get an approval on the second-hand dealer's license. We have Tri Valley Cash for Gold, I'm one of the owners. We have nine other locations, most of them in California, a couple in Idaho. So we realized that every city operates a little differently, and so I personally came up here when we were getting, applying for the business license, second-hand dealer's license, because, you know, I wanted to know firsthand on what the temperature was. Like I said, everyone's a little different. So I went, I came up here, I talked to the business license department. It seemed like it was a pretty simple deal. It didn't seem like it was out of the ordinary. I've ran into a few that were a lot more difficult, I thought. So anyway, basically, they let me know the process, that, you know, it would go ahead and go through a couple approvals, and then we'd get a temporary, and then the license would come as long as we passed the background check. Well, you can't apply for a second-hand dealer's license anywhere unless you have an address to apply it to. So the Meadowwood Mall had an opening, and that they're losing their gold buyer on 1031, and it's a kiosk in the Meadowwood Mall, and that's what we do. We're in malls, very safe locations, never had an incident ever, safety-wise. So we went ahead and verbally agreed to go with it until I came up here and I wanted to kind of see what, you know, what the deal was. After talking to people, after we got our first approval before I came to council, I went ahead and I had to sign the agreement, because you can't hold off during November, December for the malls. They go very quickly, and the opportunity wouldn't have been there. And so they went ahead and, we went ahead and signed our contract, which is, you know, over six months, it's going to be $30,000. During November, December, we're paying $6,000 a month. We're currently paying on that kiosk right now as of November 1st. I've paid all my license. I've done everything I can do within my controls. I did the due diligence. I went ahead and trained an individual in California. I paid for the moving fees to bring them up here, and, you know, we have significant money invested in the Meadowwood Mall in being able to operate, and I'm just seeking that we can get your approval today and start operating. That's what we'd like to do. We do everything legitimately, and we're just waiting for your approval, so I'd appreciate that if we can get that today.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, for legal, I know we kind of had this conversation last week when we met as well, but I'm believing that the action that we took, the discussion and direction that we gave to staff on September 28th indicating our interest in a moratorium would have an influence on these three requests today, two in particular. So can we, can we hear from you?
Craig Skaw from the Reno City Attorney's Office, and yes, there was a request in the September date to move forward. Staff had looked at that and thought that we had addressed some of the concerns and were, I think there was some miscommunication for which we all apologize. We have now prepared a resolution that is on the agenda today as item H8, I believe it is. With the passage of the resolution, that will effectively stop them.
Craig, how does that influence, of course, I know that's on the agenda later today, but how does that influence, in consideration of the conversation that we had on the 28th, these requests today?
As you can see from this person's interest, he has had these plans in for a long time. He, and I believe that's true with all the ones today, that they have had their plans in and their applications in prior to those dates, and so it would not have any influence at all. As to the technical legal influence, if there was somebody who first started in the gap, that I would ask leave to address when that comes up, because there may be some very touchy legal issues involved in that in this matter, as well as some other pending matters before the city council, or before the city.
Are there any others that are in the cycle?
I believe there are, because there are two scheduled for next week's agenda also.
Does council, would council, and I know we got, I think I remember a memo from you that didn't give, at least in my evaluation, a real clear direction. Is there enough concern by anyone else that we continue these so that we can have a client attorney direction on this?
Not from my position, no.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Zadrez, Ms. Sefrazza.
Yeah, Craig, and I got to tell you, it's a bit irritating, because, again, we put forward this with the intent that we wanted to look at this issue because council at the time believed that there was going to be a proliferation of these licenses for precious metals, and sure enough, they're coming forward. What I would like to see is a matrix of what, where, I mean, the pawn shops are so heavily regulated, I don't even think they can go into a mall, number one. Number two, near schools, near churches, there are specific zoning laws that regulate where a pawn shop establishment can go, and under H8, that's exactly how the resolution goes into detail on the moratorium, is that really this is just a circumvention of what's required, the capital investment, and the zoning requirements for a pawn shop license. So again, why now, when councils So again, why now, when council's intention was to have a moratorium on this issue so we don't get into the whole issues? This just reminds me of the gaming issue, the Dottie's issue, with the proliferation of these things, that now I feel like we have the gun to our head again because the moratorium... because staff accepted these applications essentially when the council's intention was to put a moratorium on this to study the issue.
The resolution will stop that practice at this point. I think I've already indicated, there may have been some miscommunication. To the extent that there was, I sincerely apologize. I'm doing the best I can.
There was council... not only was... but I don't see how there could be miscommunication when there was council action on that agenda item. Where's the miscommunication? Council voted on it. To me, that's just unacceptable. I'm sorry, it's totally frustrating. We're the policymakers. We took the action. Councilwoman Zadrez put it on the agenda, and we took action on it.
Yes, ma'am. Alex Woodley, for the record, code enforcement manager for the city. Yes, ma'am, we did research the September 28th hearing, and we did see the direction that staff received. And there's a memo that we'll be sending to you here pretty soon. We have to make some changes to it. But there were six different avenues that we were told to research. One of them did include the moratorium. And I apologize for that because one of the issues was also to look at restricting or placing conditions on those licenses. And that was the one that I identified in the NRS, which allowed us the ability to do so. And that's what I initially brought forward at the previous council meeting. And council approved six licenses based on those conditions and restrictions. Since then, we have researched the other remaining five, one of which included the moratorium, actions that can be taken. And we do have that before you, and that's why you have the resolution today for the moratorium itself. But as far as taking action with applications that we receive, typically in the past, what has occurred is that we continue to receive the applications until the resolution is actually approved. And then at that point is when we stop accepting them.
But Alex, I guess I would challenge staff on that because in the past, that's not what has happened. And I'd like to hear from the city attorney's office. When the council has an intention of putting a moratorium in place, then my understanding is then we can still reject those applications because the council's intention is to bring that forward.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Under the law, to be able to basically stop the application process, the institution of the moratorium has to be clear on the facts. And you have in the past, I don't remember all the specific instances, but at a certain meeting indicated, you know, bring a resolution back at the next meeting. However, it was very clear in the meeting and the record that that was the action you were going to take. Here, according to staff, the tape indicates it was a research of six items. And I think that's the legal concern right now because researching items doesn't mean that there is an intent to establish the moratorium on that date. So that's the legal concern.
Any other discussion? Mr. Dorch?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, as far as continuing these items, I would not support that. And, I mean, clearly, what we thought our direction was and what staff took out of it was... were different. But, I mean, the one person that spoke, I don't know about the other two, but at least the one person that spoke, came in, did everything he was asked to do, has spent money to get his store opened, has gone through the process and done everything he's asked. And I don't think it's appropriate for us to continue to delay. I mean, he was prepared to open, I'm hearing, on the 1st. And I just don't think it's appropriate for us to continue to delay him when he's done everything the city told him to do. I just don't think that's appropriate.
Mr. Heshef?
Conditions attached to this particular one?
For the record, Michael Chomp, Business License Division. For the three that you're discussing right now, there are no conditions placed on these three applications. I would mention that Tri Valley did come in on September 26th. That application came in two days before council met. On Asian Gift and Jewelry, that was a proactive case. That was a case where the store has been open and operating. They weren't in compliance because they were buying gold and advertising buying gold, so we're trying to bring them into compliance. And on the third application, this is a gift shop, that's not open. It's under construction right now. Currently, councilman, there are no conditions outside of the normal conditions that are in...
But the other ones that were approved, that we approved, we asked the applicant to come up because staff had added conditions, and the applicant agreed to those conditions prior to approving the license. So why wouldn't we do that here?
Council placed those conditions on that applicant to just buy gold? If that's the direction that council would like to go, I'm sure that since the applicant's here, you can... because you do have the ability to place those conditions on this applicant.
Mr. Wilcox, would you come up a minute, please?
Yeah, hi, I'm Richard Wilcox.
Identify yourself for the record.
Richard Wilcox.
Okay, all right.
Basically, alls we do is buy gold, silver, and platinum. Nothing else. That's... and so in our... and with the mall, what's nice about having us in the mall is that we have to stick to the conditions at the mall that we told them all. In our license with the mall, that's what our conditions are. Gold, silver, and platinum. That's it. Nothing else.
Mr. Heshef, I didn't mean to cut you.
No, I was just curious, from staff's perspective, why didn't they have this discussion with the applicant? Because the other applications that we approved had specific restrictions on them, and they agreed to them. I don't see you in any different position than the prior applicants, just to be fair. And it was not just... I mean, there were other conditions, if I remember, other than just limiting the sale of gold, or it was purchase of gold. What would they be? Well, that's what I'm asking staff. I don't remember them, and I don't want to invent this at the table. I mean, I'd rather continue this than allow you to sit down with the applicant and work it out.
Yes, Alex Woodley, for the record again. Sir, the reason why we didn't refer those conditions to this particular business owner is because the other ones dealt with loan establishment that was in a structure, and the conditions, if you can recall, was signage, which we didn't see that as being a problem, as it's in the interior of a mall. The other condition was the sales of other items, which we didn't see that as an issue as well because we had a little kiosk as opposed to the ability to store pawn brokerage-type stuff. And then, and number three was the not allowing anyone to leave anything for consignment, which, once again, being the fact that it was just a kiosk, we didn't think that those were really necessary conditions to bring forward to this particular applicant.
Were those the only ones?
Those were the three conditions, yes, sir. Now, keep in mind, the council has discretion to place whichever restrictions or conditions that they want. And we can do that here on the record. And as the applicant is here, I think that's a benefit for him to accept. Thank you.
Mr. Heshef?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I guess I'm having some difficulty on these ones. The other one I had trouble with because they were already a business that didn't do this stuff at all. They were in the business of loaning money for a check. This is something that's specific to second-hand merchandise, and I don't know why, when we start limiting people about, okay, from now on, we're not gonna allow you to purchase size 10 shoes. This is a commodity. My issue with the other ones were it's a totally separate kind of business than what they were licensed to before. This one seems to be the same thing, buying used property. And if they're not being held for pawn, which doesn't appear that any of these are because they're not in the pawn shop business, I don't know what... I'm curious what the issue is on, like, a kiosk. I don't really know what that issue is.
Okay. Staff got a question, answer about anything?
That was more for council.
I just wanted to add that there was another applicant here, and I don't know if he wishes to speak, on Asian gifts and jewelry.
Well, I just... I don't know, like, postponing it. I'm just saying, to me, that's the difference between what we did before and what these people are coming forward in. You know, in what's going on in the world today, people are gonna want to sell their gold. And are we saying that they can only sell them at pawn shops? Or are we saying that a bank can... I don't know. I don't know what the... where we're trying to get. Regulated in what way?
Yeah, I think when we talked about this before, we were talking about the... the word was used before, the proliferation of this business commingled with other business. But in looking at just the agenda item EC1, the Tri Valley Cash and Gold, it's very simple, precious metals, that's all they're selling. It doesn't fit that other category. I don't know about the other two, Asian Gifts and Jewelry and Penny's Midtown Mercantile, but I agree with Councilman Dorch. I think that's... the proprietor finister, Mr. Wilcox, came forward, did what the city asked him to do, and it's very straightforward, what he's selling. And I think he has the right to do that.
What he's selling and buying?
Buying, excuse me, buying.
Buying, not selling.
I didn't mean selling, buying.
Sir, if I may, Alex Woodley, for the record again. If I may humbly just remind the council that because we have the moratorium further on the agenda, this is the opportunity for council to approve that moratorium. And then from this day forward, if we want to create more restrictions for the second-hand dealers, if we want to change how we regulate second-hand dealer licenses, we will take that opportunity of the moratorium and move this day forward and take whatever action council gives us at the approval of the resolution.
You know, I think that Mr. Wilcox applied before we ever talked about a moratorium. He did everything we said that we asked him to do. And I think we should pass his and not put it into a moratorium. He's only buying gold, silver, or platinum. He's not selling gold, silver, or platinum. He's not buying TVs or selling TVs, and I think that we should approve his. Yes?
Is the chief here by any chance? Because I guess my question would be for law enforcement because we are getting a proliferation of these. Are we getting, Chief, the reporting requirements done by the ones that have already been approved? I mean, they have to report, what, every week, every 15 days?
I believe it's monthly. And for the record, Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department. Spoke with Alex before the meeting, and the last numbers I looked at, Mr. Sefrazza, we had about a 75% compliance rate on the audits that we were conducting.
Okay, on the precious metals side?
Yes.
Okay. And then what happens if they're in violation? So essentially, they have to hold the merchandise for 15 days, and then they can melt the metal? They can do whatever they want with it, correct?
That's probably one option. I mean, as far as in violation, our special investigations division will work closely with Alex's people to work with that company.
So if they are not filing the reports, and maybe this question for our city attorney, what's the remedy then? Can council then pull the... their privilege license?
Craig Skaw, City Attorney's Office. The Nevada revised statutes have the requirements to do those reporting for second-hand dealers. And the failure to do so is a misdemeanor, and the violation of a law that relates to the conduct of the business would also be grounds for revoking or suspending a license, yes.
So what are we doing with the 25% that don't report? Have we taken any through revocation? Have we...
All right, excuse me?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Michael Chomp, again, for the record, Business License Division. In light of the discussion that we've had the last couple of months, our division is gonna be sending letters to all the second-hand dealer licensees as a reminder with the attached reporting requirements so they are clear what they need to report. And that's how we were gonna initially handle it on a proactive basis. In addition to that, any new application that comes in gets a copy of the code with the requiring... the reporting requirements.
And then, I guess, Chief, one last question. Have we seen any issues as far as theft? Especially on the precious metals side? Coming from the police department? I mean, I know copper was a huge issue with, for instance, the telecommunications companies where people were in our own parks as well. I think it was like sprinkler heads. I mean, there is theft involved in precious metals. And I know copper was one of those that was big for the department. And, I mean, how do you relate that when somebody goes to sell that at one of these places?
I apologize, Mr. Sefrazza. I had those numbers earlier this year, and I don't recall them today. But I'll make sure I get that information, if that's okay, ma'am.
So has it been a problem on that side?
I'd have to ask Alex, but I want to say, when we talked about this earlier this year, in really the early spring, I want to say it was not a problem from the data we got from crime analysis.
Okay.
That is correct. Alex Woodley, for the record, because I recall when the chief was here with his report. And it was very, very mild. I think it was about 1% that the police department was able to identify that had issues with that.
Okay.
Mike? Can I ask you a question on what... a follow-up on what Councilman Sefrazza asked? She asked about what are we doing to the 25% who aren't doing it? And the answer was, we're gonna send a letter to everybody.
That's the proactive side. If we find that they're not reporting through the police department...
But we know that there are 25% who are not reporting.
Yeah, we just... we would work with the police department and identify those 25, but...
But why would we bother to the expense of going out and sending letters to people who are doing the right job?
Well, that way I know that everybody is covered with a letter, and they have a copy of the reporting requirement.
So how are we gonna deal with the 25%?
Well, our proposal initially was to do a proactive letter to all of the licensees. And then we would monitor those...
That doesn't sound proactive to me, just telling everybody what they're required to do. That's not proactive in telling them to stop.
No, sir, Alex Woodley, for the record again. Typically, with any business license code violations that we have when we do audits, et cetera, or what have you, we always give them the benefit of the doubt as far as knowledge, education, what have you. And we put them on notice. If it continues, if they don't fix it upon the first notice, typically it's a notice to comply. If they don't comply with that, and we end up having citations, because we will follow up, then at that point, we will pursue a revocation of the business license.
I agree with that, but the comment was, we're gonna send everybody a letter. It's like when you go out and weeds in the yard, you're gonna send everybody in the neighborhood a letter saying that they gotta keep their weeds down instead of going after the offenders.
No, no, that's true, sir. And we are doing that, and that's separate. What Michael Chomp was referring to was, from the previous council meetings, we discussed it. And we have a certain amount of second-hand dealers out there. So we wanted to make sure that all the second-hand dealers were doing what they're supposed to because we ourselves have been researching and reading NRS and our code. So... but that's aside from the fact that those individuals that are violating, they will be addressed and treated accordingly with a notice to comply and the citations and revocation.
Mr. Heshef?
I don't have any more comment other than the fact that staff answered my question as to why this particular applicant is different. So I'm comfortable with that.
I'll try a motion.
Give me a motion.
I'll move to approve items E1, C1, 2, and 3.
Would you break those to one standing on its own? Because it's clear that they came in on the 26th before the 28th. And the other one you're saying is a compliance issue. That's a whole different question, and I'm not sure what Penny's was.
It's a new business.
I'm sorry, councilman.
Penny's is new, and when did that application come in?
That came in the first part of October. I believe October 5th. But I don't have no knowledge. I have not asked them if they knew of the discussion that you were having. The Asian Gift, that applicant's here. He may want to say a couple of words before you vote.
When did this come in?
I'll make the motion to approve item E1, C1.
Second.
E1, C1, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and support the motion. I don't like it because I think we need more study on where these are located. Also, coordination with the police department as far as the reporting requirements. But I do agree with Councilman Dorch, it came in, and they did everything they said they were gonna do. And quite frankly, so did 2 and 3. Although 3 is... doesn't deal with precious metals, which I think was the intent of the council. So I'm gonna approve those as well because staff took the applications.
Well, this motion's only on one right now. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and move to approve items E1, C2, and 3.
C2 and 3. Have a second? Have a second. Discussion?
So can we hear from the representative from the Asian Gifts and Jewelry? Yours is a compliance issue, sir?
Your name?
My name is Kurt Salphi, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for hearing me today. My wife and I bought a mom-and-pop gift shop about in July, a few months ago. We went through the process of getting all the licenses. We're not experts on business. We were unaware of the privilege license. From speaking with some other business owners, no one had mentioned that. I didn't really know... I didn't really know there was an extra license. Buying gold was suggested to me as a good business option, and so we started to do that. A woman from the city came in last month and said that you need to cover up your sign and stop buying precious metals. This business was bought from a friend of ours. It's been in this town since the 80s. A lot of the clients that have purchased gold from her back in the days are now coming back to sell it. A lot of the people are my friends. I understand the criminal aspect of buying precious metals and all that entails. 80% of our business was actually purchasing these metals. I mean, people are not buying things they're selling. Whatever I need to do to be in compliance, I've done. It's hurt us financially for a month. We'd have to, we've had to sell our own gold, my wife especially, to make ends meet, to get by. I've been fingerprinted three times, I think, in a year for a real estate license, my gaming license, and this. I've been through the FBI, a background check, so I don't know what else I can do other than to state that this is a vital part of our business. I don't, we're not buying and really selling. We're just buying it and holding on to it. And the reality is, it sits on the shelf and collects dust, and then it gets melted down, because we need to get the money back, so. Like I said, a lot of our clients are friends from my business associates in the casino industry. A lot are people that have purchased gold anywhere from 10 to 20 years from the woman who owned this, this business. Like I said, I was unaware of it. It's not an excuse. I'm not an expert in business. I'm learning every day. But I have followed all of the, the requirements since I've been notified of, of what I need to do. And like I said, I'm sure the economy will change, but right now, this is a huge part of our business. And I believe it's good for everybody involved. I mean, the people that come in, get a rent check, they get a payment. I'm not a pawn shop. I don't hold it. And with the option that they get to buy it back, it puts money in their pocket, it puts money in my pocket, it puts money in the refiner's pocket. It's just a piece of metal that's sitting in someone's box that now is put back into the economy. And I do understand the, the criminal aspect of people stealing merchandise. That's all I have. Thank you.
So you initiated your action in July?
We purchased the, the home and the business in July. It was a suggestion that we do buy gold from a friend, that this is important to, to be able to, you know, keep your business running in this environment. I was not aware of a privilege license until the woman from the city showed up on my, my front door. And I covered up the sign that day. Haven't purchased anything since then. Went through the FBI background check and, and paid all the fees and everything, and, and just waiting, basically.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Understanding that, Mr. Mayor, again, it was just poor communications between our direction and, and staff's interpretation. So move to approve C two.
Have a motion.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Did we take, did that take three, two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right. At 2:30, we'll go into redevelopment, and we might as well hear J four at the same time.
We've got two more items on the, three more items on the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'm going to get them. I just wanted to tell everybody. All right. C three? E three? C three?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I pulled that because the city attorney asked me to.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. We ask that this be pulled because we provided some additional language to the contract that was passed out to you on, in your packets and in your dais, and it's already been provided to the public. So if you could include that in your motion, it would be appreciated.
Move to approve with the amendment, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Have a motion, second discussion, Mr. Frazee.
I'm sorry, we're on E three, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yes.
Just a question for staff quickly before we do this, because the city has so much vacant space now as far as buildings. I don't know if we have any vacant space, any retract land. But has that analysis been done? Because this is for our fleet, and it is, I mean, what the lease is, $60,000 a year, I believe, $70,000 a year. I realize there was a reduction from the landlord, but have we, I mean, looked at this to see if there's any vacant space that we could be using? And certainly, I know of the few city bill, city buildings that are, are half vacant.
Perhaps you can pull a fire truck into.
Yeah, not, not that, but the.
For the record, Mike Crin, Indian Fire Chief. Yes, we did. We worked with John with respect of what is currently available. And the intent originally was to bring the lease payment into more equitable market terms. And the most significant change, as I understand it for this, is, is to change the lease term to make it coincide with the start and end of our budget year. It's, it's our fleet maintenance facility, so.
So there's no other location, though, where that can go? I just want to hear that from staff on the record.
For the record, John Flans, for Director of Public Works. We do not have any other properties in terms of retract that would accommodate this use with the need for the high, the high ceilings, high doors to accommodate the equipment that's being serviced.
Do we, do we have room at our other shop?
There is some room available there, but that was looked into, and, and the fire operations did not feel that they could accommodate with the limited space that we had. We had a couple bays, how that would work in.
And how many bays you got at this other place?
I'm sorry, what was the question, sir?
How many bays? Do you have at the present location?
Actually, it's, it's more of a warehouse. We have one large door, but we can accommodate up to six, possibly even eight vehicles the way the, the warehouse is laid out. They pull in, they kind of park on an angle, and we've got the portable lifts, and they can work on approximately three, possibly four vehicles any given one time inside the coverage structure.
Okay, so we don't have that space over at the pub, okay.
I do have one more question, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Because of the county's actions on the deconsolidation, and that was referenced in the staff report, we are reducing the, the square footage starting when? And, and how much is that being reduced by a third?
For the record, Michelle Hobbs, Reno Fire. We actually reduced the space at the fleet shop, the current fleet shop, by half this past April. We did a, in, going forward, we did an analysis on the space we were using. We sort of did a preemptive sort of look forward. As of this April, we reduced our payment from somewhere of $17,000 a month to now $8,000 a month. And we've essentially shrunk that space down by half.
Okay, so that's anticipation too of? Okay.
Mr. Frazee?
One quick follow-up to that, then. It says it's going to save $68,000, $69,000 per year. Does that include, like, from the, that's about $6,000 a month? So we've saved approximately $45,000 this fiscal year?
Correct. We have some savings this fiscal year that, in anticipation of the deconsolidation, we'll be able to have some of those funds available this year to utilize as far as what we're going to need to prepare ourselves going forward with deconsolidation.
So, but this $45,000 then that we would, we'll save on this, that was budgeted, so that's additional money that goes back to the general fund?
Goes back, portion of it will go back to the Truckee Meadows, according to the interlocal agreement, but also a portion of it will go back to the general fund, correct?
Okay. I, I don't know if I would, because you're going to come back to us in December, by December, to talk about all those little bitty pieces.
Correct. We're going to come back to you like we agreed to with tru-ups, with the interlocal agreement for the past three years with the interlocal.
Great, thank you.
All right. Chair and entertain a motion? Yes? We have a motion? Going to sleep, I guess. Have a motion, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item E four.
Already found my own answer, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I may interrupt, in, in interest of time and saving some, some people in the audience, agenda item L four is Mr. Iazzi's item. And he and I talked about that, and I noticed that Dr. Izer has come in the room from the Washoe Health Department. And Dave, we're, we're still continuing that?
Yeah, we can do that. And then, guys, we're going to meet, Mr. Guston and I are going to meet with him and talk about some issues before we bring it to council, unless other people want to have a discussion.
So you have a motion to continue?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue, all four. Thank you, Dan.
Okay, motion, second?
Second, yes.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for bringing that up. All right.
We're done with consent.
Now we. Item F one.
Do we do E 12?
Excuse me. E 12, excuse me, I'm sorry. Item E 12.
Mayor and City Council, Steve Hardesty, Public Works. We just wanted to bring council's attention to the staff report, the staff title. The correct name instead of Tomaloff's LLC should be 701 South Virginia LLC. The agreement and everything else has the proper name on it, but the title of the staff report needs to be corrected.
All right. Have a motion, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given. No correspondence was received.
Okay, item F one. Bring it to table for discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this was actually required to come into conformance with our master plan, so it's just cleanup language to come in compliance with the master plan.
Okay.
So I'd go ahead and uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Okay. Have a second? Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F one one.
Bill number 6776, an ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled zoning, rezoning a plus or minus three-acre site bounded by Lewis Street to the north, Sunshine Lane to the east, Prosperity Street to the south, and Kitsky Lane to the west, from I Industrial to A C Arterial Commercial to ensure conformance with the existing urban residential commercial master plan, land use designation, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Move to refer.
Have a motion, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Secretary, on item F two, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given. No correspondence was received.
Okay, bring it back to the table for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve the amendments to the Somerset Southern Expansion Sierra Canyon Two P U D standard handbook subject to compliance with condition A.
Have, have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll go to ordinance adoption? Nope, there are none, so we'll go to resolutions. Item H one.
Resolution number 7636, resolution donating $1,700 from the Reno Access Advisory Committee funds to VSA Arts of Nevada to provide 20 art classes for adults with developmental disabilities.
Have a motion, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H two.
Resolution number 7637, resolution donating $2,000 of Reno Access Advisory Committee funds to the Northern Nevada Center for Independent Living to defray expenses associated with its cosponsorship at the keynote speaker for the Disability Awareness Month program hosted by the Disability Awareness Coalition in Reno in October 2011.
Have a motion, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H three.
Resolution number 7638, resolution granting $15,000 to Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful for fiscal year 2011-12 activities.
Move to approve?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. H four?
Resolution number 7639, resolution for budget augmentations and approval of budget revisions, October 1st, 2011 through October 31st, 2011.
Move to adopt?
Have a motion and a second? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. H five?
Resolution number 7640, resolution granting approval of up to $125,000 to Art Town for festival sponsorship.
Move to adopt?
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Adder, I didn't hear that. We have a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. H five one?
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, this is just an approval of the agreement.
Move to approve the agreement?
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. H six?
Resolution number 7641, resolution granting approval of up to $50,960 to the Pioneer Center for, for, excuse me, for Performing Arts for fiscal year 2011-12 sponsorship.
Second.
Did you say dollars? I'm sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. H six one?
Move to approve? Second?
Motion, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Again, motion carries unanimously. H seven?
Resolution number 7642, resolution granting approval of up to $8,000 to Sierra Arts Foundation to maintain a web-based arts calendar during fiscal year 2011-12.
Second?
Motion, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. H seven one?
Second?
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. H eight?
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, this is a staff report related to the moratorium. If you'd like to hear that first, the resolution then can be read.
Yes. Let me ask the council, do you want to hear that?
I just have a couple clarification questions.
Okay. Councilwoman Frazee?
Yeah, I, I want to make sure, because I, I'm not sure about the whole council's intention, but really, the, the secondhand license dealers covers antiques and, and other types of businesses. So I'd like to hear what those are, because I'm, by approving this moratorium, we would be excluding them as well. And I think the focus was, was the precious metals piece. So I'd like to know what's included on the secondhand dealer licenses.
Craig Skaw from Reno City Attorney's Office. The definition of a secondhand dealer is anyone who buys or sells any kind of secondhand gold is anyone who buys or sells any kind of secondhand gold or junk, and also includes any personal property, so it is very broad. You could amend the resolution from the table here and just limit it to gold, and that resolution could be brought forth in that amended form for signature.
Okay, what is the, I guess, I see Mike here, and I did have a discussion with him earlier, what's exempt right now from the secondhand dealer's license as far as, there are some exemptions?
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, just to make council aware, there was an NRS change, and that NRS change will take out antiques, collectibles, and coins, and we are processing an ordinance to take those out, and I think from the city manager's office, Ms. Matievich indicated that's coming maybe at the next meeting as an intro.
Okay, so that's, I guess what my question is, those would be, those would no longer be under a secondhand dealer's license than Craig?
That's correct.
Under the statute, they were taken out?
Yes, used books, where is it? Used books, antiques, coins, and collectibles are, have been taken out of the NRS now.
Okay, so they, as of the 16th, they wouldn't even have to get a secondhand merchandise license?
Correct.
Okay, and so what would this cover then, this moratorium, so would those things being exempted?
Anything, anything under the nose, television sets, any kind of personal property that is purchased, used, and then once it goes to be resold, then the buyer and seller of those used items is a secondhand merchant, other than some, other than the, it would apply to anything other than those specific items I mentioned that are out under the legislative change.
Okay, and then my last question is, this would not affect, like, the nonprofit thrift shops, like a Salvation Army or Wark or?
I believe that there is a specific section in NRS that exempts secondhand merchandise transactions that are conducted by a charitable entity exempt under the IRS.
Okay, can we, I just want to verify that, I just want to make sure what's being included today, and then maybe, Craig, if it's specific to that particular, I mean, can we do it where it's specific to the precious metals?
If it could, it would be a simple fix to simply say, secondhand dealers dealing in gold and secondhand, gold and precious metals.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
No, that's okay, I was just going to ask a question, that's what we're really after.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're getting kind of blue with everything else.
That's what I want to make sure, yeah.
All we're trying to do is the gold and precious metals, so that, that's, that change, that fix, sounds very simple. Anybody else?
That's all I wanted to make sure, that was that.
Okay, then, then are you going to move to adopt the resolution with the change specified?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and, and go ahead and approve that change, I want to be clear, because we have a few that are coming on the agenda for next week.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think legally now, that we're going to have to, that those would be exempt from this moratorium, I want to put that out there on the record, because they've already been processed, so I don't know how council feels about that, but I don't see that we have any other choice in the matter, but that would be the change, I think, the precious metals.
Yes, ma'am, Alex Willie for the record, City of Reno Code Enforcement and Business License, yes, thank you, ma'am, council members, Frozette, that was, as a matter of fact, that 's what we were researching right now upstairs when you came to this item so quick, so we weren't able to identify exactly how many, but we know we have at least a handful of them, I believe three that I've seen thus far are not precious metals, but we believe the other two are, so, but we couldn't have an opportunity, our staff were dealing with clients at the counter, so we would like that clarification as far as the date, from this date forward, or what date you would like to select, so that we can process the ones that are in the system.
Well, I think it should be of last council meeting though, because that last council meeting, we made it clear that this moratorium was the intention of the council, that's why I asked that question of Tracy earlier, there may have been some conflicting information on the 28th, but there wasn't last council meeting, that's for sure.
That's correct.
And?
That was October 26th.
I would go ahead and make that motion, but also I'd like staff to look at what the other cities are doing in the state regarding these particular licenses, because they do have some different requirements on precious metals, so I think we, we need to look at the best practices across the state on this, so, and be specific to that.
Hang on to that motion, we'll read the resolution, then the motion can follow, please.
Resolution number 7643, resolution directing staff to reject applications for and to cease issuing privileged business licenses for secondhand dealers, and we will insert relating to gold and precious metals, effective immediately and throughout the duration of the moratorium ordinances prohibiting issuance of such licenses.
Were you, I'm sorry, were you accepting the two that are coming up at the next meeting?
Well, it doesn't mean I'm approving them, we have to hear it first, but they would be exempted from the, well, I want staff to check the dates on those, because the intention was, the last time we met was, what, the 28th or?
26, yes, ma'am.
The 26th, there was no bones about it, that was our intention, and councilwoman Zadra, I think, would agree, that was our, there was no question about it, that we were going to move forward on hearing this today, so I would like staff to look at that date, so anything from that council date forward, so.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, the resolution title said effective immediately, it should then read effective as of the prior meeting date.
Okay.
This resolution says effective of September 28th, doesn't it?
No, I think it says effective.
It says 28.
Says on the 28th, City Council requested a moratorium.
Right, I'm just correcting the title, because the title itself of the resolution had the word immediately, and it should actually refer to that prior date.
So the September 28th date is incorrect, right? Well, this resolution says specifically in the recitals, that we requested the moratorium on the, on September 28th.
Yes, and I put that in there after Ms. Zadra left, no question that that was what she had directed in her mind, I think there may have been some confusion, but in any event, certainly as of the October 26th date, there were, it was clear, and so I would recommend that you use the October 26th date.
And we can make corrective clerical changes throughout the resolution to reference that date.
And I can accept the October date, although we did have the conversation on the 28th, and I'm not going to go back to the conversation we had an hour ago, but the new conversation that I want some direction on from legal is, the opinion that was stated today in terms of when the conversation was had and the intent was expressed, and when action can be enforced against that, is entirely different than direction or legal interpretation than we've heard from you before, so we're going to, I think, need to have clarification on that issue, just in memo form, we don't need it on the council agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have agreement on the motion? And a second?
So it's, I just want to clarify, it says of October 26th, don't like it, but I think that's where we have to go at this point.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving ahead, no ordinances, community development, J2. Case LDC 12-00012 Somerset Southern Expansion Sierra Canyon Amendment. That's in, that's in Dave's Ward.
I'm going to assume he doesn't have a problem with it, so I'll go ahead and accept the staff recommendation.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. J4, presentation review discussion and potential approval of Worth Group Architects to provide architectural services for the National Bowling Stadium in the amount not to exceed $110,900. You know what, is it 2:30 yet? It's not quite 2:30, two minutes.
Yeah, can we do this at the same time as, let's just take a recess for a minute?
You want a recess? Okay, we'll take a five, seven minute recess and be right back.
This time we'll go to item J4, on the agenda.
Good afternoon, Robert Chisel, Finance Director for the City of Reno. The State Legislature approved AB 376 in the 2011 session, which imposed a surcharge of $2 per night for the rental of hotel rooms in the Reno Downtown District. This surcharge and the passage of the bill has collected approximately $333,000 through August to that fund. This funding was to be used solely for the paying for the improvement and maintenance of publicly owned facilities for tourism and entertainment in the district, and cannot be transferred to any other fund or account or used for any other purpose. The City Council created a Capital Projects Surcharge Advisory Subcommittee. This Subcommittee has recommended to the council the approval of these agreements with the Worth Group, and staff is recommending council approval and authorization to spend approximately $110,900 for these contracts. But before we get to that, we have the Worth Group, James Mickey from the Worth Group is going to give a short presentation on what the intent of this money is going to be spent on, and his plans for the bowling stadium, and his, well, do we have that?
Good afternoon, James Mickey, Worth Group Architects. Got a brief presentation here as to some of the ideas and concepts that we're going to be looking at for the two projects. Keep in mind that what is out there is for, there we go, to go ahead and do two independent studies, and one of them is to go through and work with the bowling congress, and be able to set up a museum inside the existing bowling stadium, most likely it's going to be in the area where the old Pendleton shop was. Part of that is to go through and work with the memorabilia that they have, as well as a lot of the artifacts and other things that they have to kind of create part of a museum that had been originally in St. Louis, but has been now closed down, so they have a number of items there. And then the other one is the overall review of the entire facility, basically being able to go in and look at what are the options and opportunities to make improvements to the building, and get it set up to where it can handle the tournaments moving forward through the next 20 years. So one of the first things, and please, I'm going to rattle through this fairly quickly.
You go right ahead, and we'll come up with questions.
Sure, I was going to say, if you got questions along the way, but the first piece I want to kind of go through is the museum. As I mentioned, there's a number of artifacts that are available through the USBC that they want to be able to incorporate into a new location, and as part of creating a new environment or a new idea for part of the property, there's a number of things that they have available, have had the, the players are already getting down there and taking a look at a lot of the items, as well as going through the collection. Two of the main pieces that they have, and you see here on the screen, is, on the right is those plaques for all the gentlemen who have been inducted to the Hall of Fame, they have approximately about 75 of those, and then they have an oil portrait of every single lady who's been inducted into their Hall of Fame, so that's what you see there in the middle, and as I mentioned, they've just got tons of things. The main focus of a lot of this is going to be on what the women bowlers have done, and their history, and what's going on with it, but the biggest thing, as I mentioned, about all those oil portraits, and having 150 of them, so what you're seeing popping up here is a number of these images, and so that's kind of going to be one of the biggest challenges, is how do you take something like that and really work it into a museum and give it a lot of character and the history of it? And I have to admit, one of my favorite ones, and for whatever reason, out of the 150, this one is the only one that has a pink background. You'll notice all the other ones, they're blue, they're gray, or whatever, for whatever reason, and nobody can tell us why, this one has a pink background, so, like, it's going to be a lot of fun to try and work with these, and we're looking at it in a couple of different ways, and we're not locked into anything yet, and that's where we want to work with the various groups and the users as to what works with this, but we're kind of in three modes right now on the museum as to, is it something that's more traditional as you see in these portraits, something that would be representative of, like, the stadium club, the heavy woods, the rich history, the Brunswick pieces and things like that, or is the museum something that becomes part of the new architecture, the new character of the building as it starts to evolve, or is the museum in itself just a unique experience, it's something that's completely different from anything else? So we have the availability to kind of look at these things as to what can become of the museum, and so that's part of our challenges as we move forward with this, and I think it's going to be a lot of fun to really look at, it's not necessarily just a revitalization of the building, but it's really going to be a rebranding, how do we really move forward with creating a new exciting environment? One of the things that we're looking at, and the way we do a lot of our studies with theming and design, is the elements and the materials and those things that are going in, the history of bowling, it's just not the objects that provide inspiration, it's the history, it's the story, something as simple as the trajectory of the ball as it goes down the lane and the path that it creates can provide inspiration for patterns and colors and movements and wayfinding within the building, so we're going to see a lot of opportunities to create something very unique with a lot of traditional items and elements that way. The building itself, same thing, go through a discovery process, there's been a number of user groups, a number of entities who have been involved that have provided input as to things that need to be repaired, things that need to be added to, reconfigured, better services, and so we're going to be taking a lot of investigative looks on things like that, we've started to go through and initially take a look at some of these items, some of this artwork you may have already seen, we've studied this from the standpoint of, is it something that is just a very minimal modification, and what you're seeing here is something that's more in relationship to the ballroom, and then moving from there as to really recreating and reidentifying what the building is, really giving it that new rebrand, reidentification, this one is really taking off from what was already done with the bowling, or the ballroom and the event center, so a lot of that character and materials, so it becomes part of what is the, you know, kind of a campus. The other idea was to go more in the direction of this entity that's being created as part of the baseball park, the historic architecture, the brick, the metalwork, and those types of pieces, and so looking at what can be part of, you know, this piece of it, and as we're going through all of this, and we've got a laundry list that's been given to us of all the items and areas and things to look at, we're basically going to be preparing this as a menu, this isn't going to be a one-item list as to, okay, here's the dollar that you can expect, and here's the project, it'll allow the group to be able to sit there and evaluate all these different areas, all these different options, and sit there and pick and choose and say, this one is worth the investment, now we're not going to work on that one, we can do this one, but let's not work on some of these other ones, so ultimately, the commission is going to go through and assign what the final project is for what this building will be. On the inside of it, the main focus is just going to be on the first and fourth level, that's the main areas of the public, although there is things going on in the second, the third, and the fifth that we'll be looking at, but a lot of it is, you know, circulation, staging areas, you can see on this diagram, there's discussion about adding 10 lanes on the lower level to create a semi-public type of space that can be used for the tournaments and also be rented out for special events, how the Hall of Fame fits into this, the lobby areas, entrances, these are all the things that people have commented on that they want this study to look at. Fourth floor, one of the biggest things that has come in as a recommendation was try to eliminate the bleacher seating, and really open the views and sightlines and everything, and create a larger open area for exhibits, creates better opportunities for revenues for additional vendors that can be up there, better access for everybody to participate in what the event is, and then even beyond what happens in a bowling tournament, they can use this as a rentable event space, you'll end up having a room that can accommodate, you know, 15,000 square feet, be able to use the lanes, or have all other kinds of events, so it's getting beyond just the bowling tournaments itself. New food and beverage services, a better pro shop, better restrooms, and having some of those things is all what has been requested by the various groups. And then ultimately, within the interiors itself, here you can see a few shots of what is existing today, and kind of, it definitely represents what bowling was when this building was created, you know, 20 some years ago, and now we look at what is bowling today. You can see that there is a drastic difference as to the mentality and the feel and the environment that you see now within bowling, and so how does this building try to recreate and become what you see on the screen now? So that is my Johnny Lightning of kind of buzzing through this, and welcome any questions or anything that you guys would like to discuss further.
Do I get any questions right now? Okay, Robert?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll chime in, I'll chime in here, basically, just to kind of give everyone kind of an update on where we're at, the women will be here in April, we're trying to get the Hall of Fame done by the time that they show up, mid-April, right, Joe, April 15th? Right around April 15th, I think, so we're trying to get the Hall of Fame done by then, that's just kind of the first phase, and that's just that ground floor piece. The other thing that they're doing is, as was said, is kind of doing the evaluation on what, what other improvements could be done as we start, as we kind of continue the negotiations with the bowlers for a long-term contract, and I think, I mean, I don't know, Joe, if you want to chime in on where we're at, just kind of an update on where we're at with that, I mean, we're making progress there.
Yes, or Mr. George? Joe Kelly, Interim Director, President/CEO of the RSCBA, we've had some very good discussions on the long term, 20-plus years, with United States Bowling Congress on extending not only the open, but the women's tournament, and also a women's and open combination, a lot of our discussions are contingent upon renovations to the bowling stadium, and this is, goes a long way towards us finalizing those negotiations, so we're having some very productive, I know Councilman George and Mayor Kishal have all been part of them, so we're making some really good progress.
And part of those, and part of those negotiations are going to be, as they start asking us what improvements are going to happen, we're going to need to know what those improvements are going to cost, so the architects are going to be able to give us a better idea of the cost of those improvements and what we can expect to get done for them in the future, so we're talking, those improvements would be for, after 2015, for the most part.
That's been the basis for our discussions to date, that we would do minimal modifications early, and then after, we have both the open and women's championships in 13 and 14, and after those, we would be in position to move forward with some much more major renovations, based on just the concepts that Jim showed you all just a little bit ago.
Would you describe to them something that we saw when we were down in Dallas, and went to Cowboy Stadium, and they had the professional? went to Cowboy Stadium, and they had the professional, the women, the tournament there, and how they set the lanes up on the 50-yard line and turned the whole stadium over, and what we're planning to do here in Reno under the arch?
Yes, sir. That was all part of the US Women's Open, which now the Bowling Proprietors Association of America have taken over that tournament. The actually Bowl Expo, or the big bowling proprietors convention, was in Arlington last year. And as part of the festivities, the ending celebration was the US Women's Open, which they hosted in the new Dallas Cowboys football stadium. It was actually shown, taped delayed on ESPN, but it was on the 50-yard line. They had four different sets, excuse me, two different sets of lanes, total of four lanes set up, big screens, Dallas Cowboy cheerleaders, probably in excess of 12,000 people in attendance. It was quite an event, very spectacular. This year, we're fortunate enough to have Bowl Expo be in Reno at the end of June. And their plans this year, it's a military-themed, heroes, American heroes themes meeting. And the plan and what we're working on now is, we will actually bowl the finals. The go-rounds will be obviously in the bowling stadium, but the finals will be under the arch on Fourth Street on a Wednesday night. I forget the exact date, but at the end of June. So, we'll actually be bowling. They're planning a lot of festivities, military, possible flyover. And once again, this will be taped delayed and shown on the following Saturday on ESPN as well. So, our big theme, Under the Arch, should just be a lot of fun. And this year, they're actually including the Senior Women's Open, which is a big thing for the ladies in bowling.
Questions, Mr. President?
Yeah, Joe, I'm not sure if this question for you or our staff on this, because right now, the baseball has the, don't they have the control rights on the ground floor of what we're talking about, Jonathan, as far as the museum?
Yeah, for the record, Jonathan Shipman, Deputy City Attorney. Yeah, currently, baseball has a development right on the first floor in the NBS. As that's written, they have to have the project built out to 50% completion by April of 2012. So, that right is beginning to expire.
To expire. And then, the remedy is, if they don't have it built out to 50% build out, they lose their rights completely on the first floor, Jonathan?
Yeah, on the first floor, definitely, yeah.
So, my question would be, shouldn't we get them to release that before we start spending fees on the actual Hall of Fame itself? I understand the rest, the lanes and everything else, but it seems premature until we get that agreement to move forward with this part of that contract.
My understanding is that it's kind of on parallel tracks right now, because you've got the problem with the delivery of the museum has to be in place by April. And at the same time, there's a discussion going on currently with baseball that I imagine is going all right, that, to release that right. So, that, I think at this point, it's more of a timing issue. That would be the ideal that you talk about, but I don't know if those two things can be done.
So, in the motion, if we approve this today, can we stipulate on that portion of the design, that the funds wouldn't be available for that portion of the contract until we got an agreement from baseball to release their rights on the ground floor there?
You could certainly do that. Again, I don't know what that would do relative to getting the work started, and would it impact your timeline for getting it done? I mean, I just...
I would hope that baseball would be working with us, and I think they will. It's just a matter of sitting down with them. We've, to delay starting design work would throw this thing way past any construction time during that time.
And I don't have an issue with that, Mr. Mayor, but let's get the release. I mean, they're not going to be able to complete that portion. Realistically, they're not going to be able to do it. But, I think there's no reason right now, I don't know who's negotiating with them, or what's going on there, but we should have a signed agreement from them that gives us access to the ground floor immediately. What I don't want to see happen is some type of litigation. So, I would prefer to have that agreement signed before we move forward on that part of the stadium.
But if we postpone designing, I mean, even if they did approve it, and we postponed design work right now, we would never get it designed or ready for the next tournament.
And I would think that, I mean, we would start, the architects would get started on it right away. And I think that's about $45,000 of what we're talking about in the contract, if I remember correctly. So, about 40, 45,000 of what we're talking about in the contract for that piece of it. And, I mean, I would think that if in the next week or so, we don't think we're going to get that release, we could always stop them at where they're at. And...
Yeah, when do you anticipate getting that release? I mean, from staff?
Well, my understanding, Mr. Katsov's coming to town this week, and so, I'm hoping that we'll be able to sit down and work something out this week with him.
Yeah, their attorney couldn't meet this week. He was unavailable this week. So, he's back in town next week.
Okay. And then, my second question is, we got a memo from staff on the RTC site, and that potentially, funds from this surcharge could be used for the RTC site for enhancements, as long as they were tied to the bowling stadium. I would like some follow-up from staff on that, because I think it's great, I think we do need to do something with the bowling stadium, because it's over 20 years old. It's a big part of our economy, Mr. Mayor. But, the fact is, people have to walk by that vacant RTC site with fence, and it's all dark. And I think it's a safety issue, especially you're talking about women bowlers. We've had complaints about that in the past. I want to know if that's something that we could do quickly as well, and maybe have the architect look at that particular site for potential connectivity between the whole event center ballroom and bowling stadium and the RTC site. It seems prime that that would be a location where you'd want to connect the dots together and do some type of entertainment facility at that location.
Robert Chisel. Basically, AB 376 states that proceeds of the surcharge imposed pursuant to this section must be retained by the city and must be used by the city solely to pay the cost of improving and maintaining publicly-owned facilities for tourism and entertainment in the district or within one mile outside the boundaries of the district, except for a minor league baseball stadium project as defined in NRS 244A 344. So, you know, that probably, depending on what we did, you know, there is some availability of doing it.
Well, we got a memo. I think, Maureen, can you address that? Because that was in the memo. We did receive a memo that potentially, I think there was an analysis done. And if we're looking right now at the design, I would like to see if we can include that site in there for some potential ideas. Obviously, the subcommittee would vet that as well. But, I just don't want to miss the mark here. I think we should be doing it all at one time.
For the record, Maureen McKissick, City Manager's Office. Yes, that was the reasoning for the timing of the memo, so that you could review that in the same timeframe as you reviewed this. We had gotten a preliminary legal analysis that that might be possible, that it might be compatible with that new law. And so, we wanted to bring some ideas forward at this time for your consideration.
So, then I would ask the architect, is that something that you guys could look at, is the potentials for that site?
Jim Mickey with Worth Group Architects. Yes, it's actually part of the agenda and the scope that we were looking at, that within not only the physical footprint of the building, but its immediate surrounding areas as to those things that could be also enhanced. Because it's not just looking at the building itself, but, you know, are there street-side improvements, how you handle the roadways, the sidewalks, plantings? There's a number of things around the area. So, looking across the street as part of what we're doing is already, is one of the things that we're looking at.
So, that's included in your scope of work right now?
Yeah.
If it's approved today, that would be included as that particular site?
Yeah, because we're already looking at, like I said, all those areas that are immediately surrounding the building, as to how they're affected for pedestrian circulation, vehicle circulation. We're kind of looking at this holistically beyond just, you know, putting paint on the building, things like that, yes.
And then, just one last question for finance, Mr. Chisel. On this particular revenue source, are we proposing pay-as-you-go for the improvements? Because this, under the legislation, this would have to be a medium-term obligation. Is that correct?
The intent right now, right now, we have the funds to fully pay for this study, these studies. And in the discussion in the subcommittee, the subcommittee's discussion was around a pay-as-you-go. I would say, right now, issuing a bond would be, I would advise against it at this time.
Yeah, and in the subcommittee, we actually, I mean, everything that we're talking about right now on the short term is all, is all very easily funded within the amount that we're expected to receive right now. And the updated numbers now are about 535,000 is what we're at, at the end of September.
So, but those improvements in 2015 that Mr. Kelly referred to, is that still a pay-as-you-go model?
You know, I don't know what will be approved as far as the funding in 2015. The intent of the subcommittee was to pay-as-you-go as they, that's one of the reasons they wanted the list of items, so that they could pick and choose what was available in the current funding, so they wouldn't have to go out to bond on any of the funding.
And all these things would be coming back to this council from that committee.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Azic and then Minister Hesha.
And maybe Dwight can answer this one. But, this one just pays for the design, but you want to get it done by April. What's the total budget to actually do this thing?
The Hall of Fame, we, I think, if I remember correctly, I think Worth Group is working within the parameters of a $300,000 to $500,000, $300,000 to $500,000 worth of improvements.
So, is the RSCBA going to put anything into this?
No.
Why wouldn't they? Don't they benefit as much, if not more, than the city does on these kind of things, bringing these people to town? I mean, I mentioned this before, but I don't mind being a partner with the RSCBA on this. But, they're the ones who are the biggest.
But, the city's not putting anything in either. It's our building.
We're putting this money into that building. We could put it into a lot of other projects downtown. I'm just asking why the RSCBA, who is the main beneficiary, the city of Reno's not the main beneficiary, it's the RSCBA.
Well, I disagree. I mean, I think, I think if you think the economy's bad in this town right now, take away the bowlers for the next 20 years and see how bad it gets. I mean, so, I disagree that the city's not benefiting from this.
The purpose of the RSCBA is to bring visitors to this town, correct?
Correct.
Why wouldn't they help us do that? That's all I'm asking. You're a representative there, too. Why wouldn't the RSCBA help do, get this done, if it's the biggest thing that comes to this area, as far as visitors from outside? Why wouldn't we be partners with the RSCBA?
I mean, I think the problem was, is, again, during the legislative session, everyone realized we didn't have the funding at the RSCBA or the city of Reno to get this done. So, the stakeholders in downtown came forward and said, look, guys, we know we've got to get this done. And we know the RSCBA doesn't have the money, and we know the city of Reno doesn't have the money. So, here's a solution that we're willing to do. And they came forward and said, and they all got together, they all went with us down to the legislature and said, look, we need this business. We need this piece of business. We know that there's no funds out there to do it. We've got a solution to solve that problem, and here it is. And they got the legislatures to buy in, and got it done in five days, which shocked all of us. And...
I'm not disputing any of that. I'm asking why wouldn't the RSCBA put into this thing?
I just told you, there's no funds available. I mean, that's, and that's, again, why the stakeholders came forward with this idea to make this happen.
Doesn't the RSCBA still give the city of Sparks a chunk of money every year? Or do they take that out?
Joe.
This could be for another time. I mean, when it comes time for the other 300,000 or 400,000. But, I'm going to, and I want to move forward on this one, because I think the design work outside of baseball, if the baseball doesn't want to do it, then that changes things. But, I want to move forward on this one today. But, I think this is a partnership with the RSCBA, the city of Reno, and the downtown properties. And I'm not saying that they didn't do a great job bringing this in. But, I think they'd also like a partner from the main organization in this community that suppose their job is to bring people.
And, I mean, you might want to talk to the stakeholders, I don't know. But, I mean, if you're going to pull money from something else at the RSCBA, you're probably going to pull it from marketing. And, I mean, that's, that budget's thin like it is. So, I think if you went to the stakeholders and said, you want the RSCBA to stop marketing this region, so that we can put money into these facilities, it's going to be a catch-22. I don't know what they're going to answer. I mean, you got to pull it from somewhere. So, something else is going to take a hit.
There's another golf course you can close.
Well, if I, Joe Kelly, once again, from the convention authority, I would like to remind everyone, we do spend, we do contribute $2 million a year to the National Bowling Stadium and Reno Event Center. That comes directly out of our budget. So, it costs us $2 million a year to operate your buildings. So, I would like to remind everybody of that as well, which is an annual expenditure that we incur. So, it's not like we're not contributing. That's a lot of money, that's the $2 million a year.
Okay.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Did anybody from the RSCBA contact the baseball folks about designing and then ultimately, you know, doing tenant improvements in that space?
No, sir. We worked through the city of Reno. That was a redevelopment agreement where they, actually, we returned the property over to redevelopment, who then redevelopment worked their agreement with the baseball team.
But, I thought under our operating agreement, don't you have some kind of entitlement with respect to what goes on?
Well, we have ingress and egress, and the right for us and our bowlers to approve any improvements that they would want to make. And then, they have to alert us of any improvements or changes they want to make to the first floor and give us six months' notice. So, if we had a tenant in the club or in the old Pendleton space, that we would have to give them six months' notice. But, no, we don't, as long as what they're doing is considered wholesome and not disruptive to the bowling stadium, then they would have the right to put in stores, restaurants, shops.
Okay. So, who would they sign the lease with? Would it be RSCBA or the city?
No, the baseball team actually has, is part of their, I believe it's a DDA or Design Development Agreement, or something like that. The baseball team has an agreement with redevelopment, I believe, is who it would be.
Then, my, same question for staff. Has anybody contacted the baseball folks to try to resolve this issue up front?
Really, Pierre, it looks like the ball was dropped, and we just started recently.
Well, I've had conversations with Garrett on this, and he's had conversations with Jerry. Again, Garrett left town, I want to say Thursday of last week, and he's not back until Monday. So, he said we'd get on it as soon as he got back.
Yeah, so, how long has that been going on?
When did you make the first call, Mayor? It's just a couple...
The first call, the first time I mentioned it to Garrett was at one of our meetings we had here upstairs with you and I, and Andrew and the stuff, going over the baseball stuff we were working on. That's the first time I mentioned it to Garrett.
Yeah, because I did get a phone call from Mr. Katsov. And the sense I got is that they really had no idea this was coming back to us for today. So, I mean, my concern is that we spend money with an architect, and we really don't have that waiver or release from, you know, whatever that entitlement is. And it's not just to the first floor of the baseball stadium, it's the RTC site. And we're actually doing design on that, and they have, they have an interest in the RTC site as well. So, I would think we'd get all that sorted out first, before we spend money. I mean, I'm in favor of the architect, you know, doing something to better the bowling stadium. But, there's this issue, I think, that needs to really get resolved first, before we spend any money. So, those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Would you, on your comment there, to hold up the architect until we get something released from Mr. ...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Gustaf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I understand the touchiness of the situation with the Katsofs and with going forward and getting this done by April. We have a council meeting next week. And I'm willing to move forward and say, okay, let's approve that. But, let's get some indication by next Wednesday where we are on that. I would like to make a couple other comments.
Sure.
I really, I really, really like the idea of the Hall of Fame and the museum for other reasons than have been stated. I understand what you're trying to do for 2015 and the improvements of the bowling stadium and the longevity of keeping those people coming to Reno. But, any place there's a museum about some specific topic or a Hall of Fame draws other people. You don't even have to care about bowling, but if you hear there's a bowling Hall of Fame or a bowling museum, if you're a visitor, that's another, it's another tool in our kit, if you will, and people coming here, something else they can do in Reno. So, that's why, from my perspective, I understand the focus, and I don't want to be myopic on bowling only, but this fits in with a lot of other things, with tourism for historical resources and all those kind of other reasons that people are coming to town. I think a museum and a Hall of Fame is a great idea. I love that. So, I think that we can move forward. I do have some reservations about where the people involved in baseball, what, how reluctant they'll be, or how willing they'll be... or how willing they'll be to help us, and I think we need to decide that soon. And hopefully, Mr. Mayor, if we can have some indication by our next council meeting on Wednesday, that, that would make sense.
And, and I think, just based upon something that either Joe or Jonathan just said, there's no way in the world baseball could meet the deadline of April anyway if they have to give six months' notice. So, if they have to give six months' notice, and we're at November now, there's no way they could make the April deadline to be 50% complete and built because they can't even start until they give us, until six months from now, assuming they gave us notice today.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This agreement, would this be with the city of Reno? So, we would oversee it, or would it be the RSCVA, or?
No, the city of Reno.
Overseased by this council?
By the city of Reno.
Yeah, it's us.
So, if we, if we did the contract today, by next Wednesday, there's not going to be $45,000 worth of work done, if it's worded that way, not to see.
That's what I said a minute ago.
I think a week means a lot, and I don't think we're violating even baseball's agreement by going in and looking at a building. It's, we're not constructing anything, we're not taking anything apart, it's just design work.
It's my understanding, even if, even if that agreement wasn't expiring in April, we still have the ability to go in there and remodel.
Right, right.
Because they haven't, they haven't decided, they haven't given us the six months' notice yet.
But, I mean, even to be fair to baseball, is what we're doing is not harming them in any way. So, it's not like we're, we're putting them in a disadvantage if we move forward today. So, I have no problem doing this, and it comes back to us again on Wednesday, put it on the agenda to see if we have that release. That's one thing, and then we can decide later, but, I mean, they're not going to spend $45,000 in a week.
Right.
Mr. Hashef?
I guess they might now.
Yeah.
Mr. Hashef?
No, I, I just have a little different opinion. I, I just think it's, you know, out of professional courtesy, we should have contacted them and, you know, had this discussion before this came back to us. So, I don't know what to do, Mr., we are meeting with them on Tuesday, I think. And Dan Guston brings up a good point about having this come back to us on Wednesday to see where we're at. But I, I just don't think we should spend any money on it until we, we got clearance.
Mr. Frazin?
Ben, because my issue, I understand what you're saying, Councilman Dorch, they're not going to be able to meet the deadlines. There's no question about that on, on their requirements to fulfill. My question is, though, is are we voting for something that potentially could open us up to litigation, Jonathan, by, by doing this? That's what I don't want to see, is a potential lawsuit.
That's, that's always a tough question to answer. I mean, clearly, there's no construction here, so you're, you're not doing anything to the space, about the space, you're.
No, but could they come back and then say, "Well, you guys had these public discussions, you, you, you approved an architect, and so therefore we couldn't even get into negotiations with tenants that we could potentially put there?" I, I'm just, I'm concerned, I would rather put it off a week. And, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to stop the thing, I'm totally in favor, my biggest concern is, is potential litigation, that's all. And Jonathan, if you can't tell me today that there's not, potentially under the DDA that we have, I'm not sure I'd feel comfortable until we get more information next week.
Yeah, I, I can't stand before you today and say that, you know, baseball would not sue you on any given fact situation, I can't say that, I mean.
But Jonathan, we, we have every bit of the authority to go in there and make improvements to that, to that space today.
Sure.
I mean, they haven't, they haven't exercised, and they haven't, they've never exercised the agreement anyway.
Right.
From two, three years ago, or whatever it was.
Correct, the lease, right, yeah.
They've never executed that agreement.
Correct.
So, we really don't have an agreement with them.
We have a DDA with them that talks about.
But they've never executed the agreement.
But they've never executed the lease, correct?
Right.
The sublease.
So, so they really, at this point, don't control the space, but even if they did, even if they had executed the agreement, because they haven't given us that six months' notice, we could be going in there and making some changes today, couldn't we?
Yeah, I, again, the, the difficulty is, I can't stand up here and say that you're not going to get sued by baseball, is the only, I mean.
But, but you're comfortable with our position.
But I'm comfortable with our position, right, yeah, I'm not.
You can't say that we're not going to get sued for anything.
Exactly, exactly.
But, but you're comfortable with our position.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question, though? I guess of RSCVA or the representatives, is a week, by putting this off a week, is that how, I mean, is the schedule that crunched, Joe?
It's worse than that.
It's worse than that?
If you, if you look at what we're looking to do with design, bid, build, and to be ready by mid-April with a municipal project, and we're here in first part of November, we have the holidays to go through, we, we needed these guys to start working 60 days ago. So, every, every day that we put off is not good for us. I'm not saying that it's the, the end of the world, but we, we need to get working yesterday.
So, the schedule can't be met, you understand my concerns, right?
Sure, I do, and I understand what Councilman Dorch is saying, but in, in, in an effort to, to get this open by the middle of April, when the women bowlers come for the women, the women's open, which opens April 14th, every day is critical. I mean, we all know what a government project, what building, a municipal project, it's not like what our hotels do where they start building and drawing at the same time. And, and if we're going to go through the process of, of designing and then bringing designs back to your committee and then bringing the, once the committee approves, back to council, I mean, that's just the way we work. So, every day is very critical to us. So, it would be our recommendation and the reason that we worked with staff is that we move forward today, and if by some chance the baseball team objects next week, we can, we could stop work. But we, it would be our recommendation that we move forward as expeditiously as possible.
Well, I'm not saying we should stop work either, I just want legal to make sure that, that.
Well, it's your building, you can draw and do whatever you want to with it, you own it, they have the right to use the first floor once they give us six months' notice, or actually, they would give redevelopment six months' notice, who would then give us the six months' notice. But it's your building, you can draw, you can design, you could do what you please, you're the owner.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion, anything other?
When's, when's the six months start? The six-month notice?
Under the, under the lease agreement, it would, it would be, baseball would give the notice for this.
Right, but, I mean, you're, I mean, I haven't gone back to them.
What the intent was, they could give us the six-month notice. What the intent was, is when we were operating the bowling stadium where this got brought up, we brought bullies into the lower floor. And, and originally, baseball didn't like that, and so the agreement was, when you're ready to go in, if you want to go in and put your own sports bar, when you want to go in and, and renovate the first floor, you will give us six months' notice, and we agreed to not lease, at the time, the space to bullies where the club is, and then we had the Reno Big Horns in the office space, so that we would give them six months' notice, that it wasn't fair to us. When we're hosting United States Bowling Congress, the Open Championships, we want a restaurant club in that corner. We don't want a dark hole, and we want people in that space.
But I guess, what I'm trying to figure out, has that six month already passed, or could they give us notice tomorrow? Because you're trying to get into that space by April, right? Have it, have the, have the Hall of Fame constructed and ready to go by April. So, if I look November, right, December, and then, we've got four months, there's my six months. What day in November is the last day to give us notice?
Well, they could give us notice at any, they could give us notice in January, and we'd have to stop.
I guess that's the point.
Based on the current agreement.
Guess that's the point.
Yeah, but then, but they'll miss the, I mean, Jonathan, you can chime in here. If they give us notice in January, they're still going to miss the April deadline to be 50% complete.
There, there are two elements, there's the DDA requirement that 50% of the build-out of the tenants on that area have to be done by the April 2012 date, three years after the opening of the ball stadium. So, that's one deadline. Then the six-month deliverable or issue that we're talking about is in the lease that they would still have to sign and give back to us, it's been approved by council. Then, once they sign that lease, then they would have a six-month, they could give us a six-month notice that they were going to start building, and then that would trigger, you know, we'd have to stop what we're doing. The, the exposure you have here is whatever money you put into the design and the construction of that space. So, it's going to be, you know, the $100,000 potentially at issue today, plus, you know, the half a million dollars or whatever it is going to be at the end of the day by April. So, that's, I mean, it's, it's at risk, that's what's at risk.
Right.
Today, the $45,000 or $100,000.
Correct, yeah, and it's up to you, I mean, the design piece is being discussed today, right.
Yes, sir.
I, I just wanted to bring up, there's, there are two separate agreements.
Identify yourself for the record.
Robert Chisel, I'm sorry. Uh, there's two separate agreements being discussed, one is for the Hall of Fame Museum, which is $42,000, and the other is for the overall feasibility study. So, the first floor would only be affected by the $42,000, so.
Ms. Andrew, do you have something? Anybody else, any discussion? Mr. Dorch, you want to give a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move to accept the subcommittee's recommendation and hire Worth, Worth.
Second.
To move forward.
Have a motion?
For, yes, for both contracts.
Um, and, sorry, Your Honor, for, for the record, the subcommittee voted to approve $90,900. Staff made a recommendation for $110,000, because there were potentially additional services under the architect's contract that we wouldn't have money to pay for otherwise. So, we put, essentially, there's a force account in there for $10,000 for each of those, so I just wanted to make.
I'll, I'll move to approve staff's recommendation.
Have a motion, have a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to support the motion, I, I think we should get this resolved before we, we go forward.
Mr. Frazin?
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually going to support the motion, Mr. Mayor, I think it time, if time wasn't of the essence, I think that the fact that they're not going to be able to get that, they have an agreement in place under the DDA that they have to be halfway constructed, the likelihood of that happening is, is, it's not going to happen, so. Well, they haven't, I mean, they, they're going to be in default on that agreement, essentially, they, how can they get something 50% complete?
Well, it depends what they're, what they're doing.
I mean, if they wanted to come forward, they, they could have come forward and, and given us something. I think that to lose this opportunity for the next 20 years to have the women here, and that, I mean, I'm not on the RSCVA, but, but the point is, that's something that they've requested. I look at that, 20 years of, and I believe, Mr. Kelly, you said there's two years out of that 20 that it wouldn't be used year-round? The, the potential economic impact of that, to move forward with, with, with something that they're asking for, I think that outweighs not moving forward and, and getting this done by the time they're here. The only thing I would request, that we also do something to improve the RTC site with some of the funds, taking down the fence, doing a welcome center there, or something of that nature before the women bowlers get here. I would ask staff to bring that back or have the subcommittee, Mr. Mayor, look at that, because I think that's an important piece while, while they're here, is to get that, that RTC site open.
Mr. Kelly, you had something to say?
No, sir, I thought Mr. Fraz was asking questions about the agreement.
Oh, the, the, for the 20 years, it would be two off-years, right?
That's what our preliminary discussions have focused around. It would be 20 years, and we would have two years of, of no bowling. So, 18 of the 20, we would have a major event in the National Bowling Stadium.
Okay, have a motion, second, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would just confirm that at the subcommittee level, we were, we did have this full conversation. And some of the same concerns that have been expressed here were hashed out, but the timing is, is critical on this one.
Yeah, I, I support what everybody's doing, I just think there's just this little niche that we need to get resolved first before we move forward and spend money with an architect, at least on, on the first floor. So, that's my objection.
Okay. Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no.
No.
Show the vote, 6-1. All right, now let's go to the re, let's adjourn the city council meeting, going to recess the city council meeting. No, this is a joint meeting, we can call a joint meeting of the city council and the redevelopment agency. So, we're under recess in the city council, now I'm calling a city council meeting and redevelopment agency meeting. All right, roll call.
Guston? Zadra? Sfrazza? Dorch? Azzi? Hasjev?
Here.
Keshel?
Here. Any public comment? Approval of the agenda? Have a motion, do have a second? Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes, October 26th? Have a motion, do have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item B1. Discussion direction, staff, direction potential, direction to the operation of the Downtown Event Center. Yes, ma'am?
Mayor and Council, Jill Olson, Finance. What you have before you is a proposed amended and restated Ballroom Facility Management Agreement between the city, RDA, and the Downtown Management Company. Staff has been meeting with the representatives of the Downtown Management Group in order to amend this agreement to more fully, make it more practical in the application of the daily operation of the facility. There are some minor adjustments to the contract, there are some, a couple of more material amendments to the agreement. I'll go through and just highlight some of the more material aspects. The definitions section, we are proposing there be a change to the definition of the fiscal year. The operator has a fiscal year that's on a calendar year basis. Since their entire financial reporting system is on a calendar year basis, it makes more sense that, that we accept their reporting and their financials based upon that calendar year so that they don't have to try and run reports that actually cross fiscal years and give us year-to-date information that crosses the fiscal years. In addition, we're proposing an operating budget, that operating budget adoption amendments be approved by the city manager and be submitted by December 1st. And then a council presentation of their budget could be made at the beginning of each calendar year. And just a clarification that the custody of the sub-account, which is the capital amount that is being held, that the custody of that is maintained by the city, there's just clarification on the custody, that no separate physical account has to be maintained by the operator, the city would just hold those funds, funds. In addition, based upon previous comments made by council, we, we pulled out, under Section 2.2, 2.2.3 and 2.2.4, we pulled out the naming rights under Section 2.2.3 and created a separate section for the naming rights to more clearly spell that out, to make sure that anything related to naming rights would come back to the city council for your approval. Under Section 2.4, again, just for the clarification on the annual budget, that the city manager would see their, their annual budget, staff would review it, submit recommendations to the city manager. In addition, not only the annual budget, but any amendments to that annual budget would come back to the city manager. And then, again, their annual budget would come back to the city council. City council, they would prepare a presentation and bring that to you at the beginning of each calendar year. Probably one of the more major changes was under Section 7.6 related to the purpose and the cost of the audit. In the original agreement, the cost of the annual audit is defined as an operating cost, and it actually comes out, it's defined as an operating expense. So, it comes out of the bottom line of, of the, of the ballroom facility. We've added language to add, to, to show that if we want an audit over and above, above what is done currently, currently, they have an annual audit that covers all of their financial reporting, and that they have Deloitte and Touche as their auditors, which has been approved by the city. That audit covers looking at all of, looking at their transactions, over, taking a look at their internal controls as far as the internal controls that they use for their, for their procedures and their policies. Anything over and above that, that's more on a compliance basis, if, if you wanted an audit that would audit the internal controls above and beyond, then such as an audit that would be specific to this contract and to, to show that. then such as an audit that would be specific to this contract and to show that they were in compliance with this contract, then they checked with their current auditors, Deloitte and Touche, and that would be an additional cost over and above the current audit of about fifty thousand dollars. And so, language was added to show that that would also be defined as within the operating expenses, and then a recommendation was put in that that type of an audit would be done no more than every four years to limit the impact on the net profit or loss of the ballroom facility. In addition, under seven point six F, we added language related to the administrative fee, which is very similar, consistent with the language that's in the agreement with the RSCBA for the event center. So, we just clarified the definition for the administrative fee. It includes costs that are indirectly incurred as a result of managing the ballroom facility, very similar to the indirect costs charged by the city for our support services departments. And you've seen that in their reports. I think they listed it as a management fee in their reports that they have brought to the council before. And those are the material differences in the amended contract. We do have representatives from the downtown management group here to answer any questions or provide any more detail, and Staff is also here to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Frazel?
The naming rights, that was something I brought up before. Who would get the revenue if there was a sponsorship or signage later in the future put on that particular facility where there was advertising of some sort? I didn't see that in the section.
The city gets it.
Yeah, that's city, and there's language specifically in there saying that it is not part of gross revenues.
Okay, I saw that it wasn't specific to the gross revenues. And then, the other thing, the, so the city manager would be signing off on the budget, not the council?
Correct.
Was that in the original agreement?
I think the original agreement might have said city council, but I think with the change of the timing of the fiscal year, it became difficult for that to occur. That can be changed. We would just have to carefully time that with the end of the calendar year in getting their budget, because their budget isn't ready and available until December first. And so, to get that to council for adoption before December thirty-first, with the way the break falls, might be a little challenging.
Well, we may have to change that. I mean, because it seems to me there would be some oversight on this. I think that was committed to when we moved forward. I think there was a concern that there would be, that the facility charges and everything else be the same, so it wasn't in competition with the convention center and some of the other concerns that were brought up when we originally structured the particular agreement on management. Now, are there two fees? There's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar fee that's charged, that's made reference to in the staff report. Is there an additional management fee on top of that?
No, there is not.
So, when there's an event, a specific event catered or had at the facility, there's not a management fee charged in that, when there's different events held there?
Not to my knowledge, no.
No, okay. That's all I have right now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Azzie?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, to follow up on that, I'm trying to go back and remember what happened on the administrative fees and the management fees. So, when we got the report, maybe it was even a year ago, there was a management fee put in there, correct?
Correct.
Was it in the original agreement that they could charge a management fee?
It wasn't specifically spelled out. It was just part of the operating expenses.
But then, as I also remember, we also, there was an administrator, a position that paid for out of the administrative, out of the expenses, correct? I think there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we paid for administrator?
I don't believe, I don't believe it was listed that way. They may want to come up and address that, but I...
I think that was a question that Councilman Hascheff brought up.
No, there was in their budget, if I remember right, there was a full-time manager and a part-time administrator that's part of the operating expenses in addition to this fee, is what I recall.
Stephanie Lepre, CFO for Silver Legacy. We are the managing member of the downtown management company. We also have representatives from Circus, our other partner, and Eldorado, our other partner. Regarding that, there is just the set administrative fee. There is a manager that runs the facility, all the way from cleaning, requisitions, all those types of things. I think I sent you guys the salary amount on that a while ago. It's pretty minimal. And then, a half of a salesperson over there, so...
Never said half an administrator?
Nope.
And how much is that fee? I mean, I'm a little concerned about just putting something open and that you can charge an administrative fee. What would that be?
No, there's no, what gets charged over there is actual clock-in, you know, everything is specific to that facility, so clock-in records, all hourly employees.
I'm sorry, this contract we're asked to approve today just says you can charge an administrative fee. It doesn't limit it to a percent, doesn't limit it to a dollar figure, it just says you can charge an administrative fee.
But to be approved by the city manager, when there's no escalator in there.
And how does that work against the next paragraph, the prohibition against additional compensation? Because I think what was, came up to us was that you would waive the fee for the building if they bought catering services from one of your organizations.
No, that's a completely separate discussion. That would be rental of the ballroom, which is standard practice within the convention industry. If you have food and beverage revenues that exceed a certain threshold of a standard rent, then that gets waived, but that's standard, the Reno Sparks Convention Center, Pepper Mill, any facility is very typical that way.
But this paragraph, maybe that's illegal, but it says prohibit, prohibition against additional compensation. Wouldn't that be considered additional compensation? Because the RSCBA doesn't offer those services. Basically, what I'm hearing is, if you buy our food, we'll give you the building for free.
That's ballroom.
Maybe you should let the attorney...
Yeah, that's just ballroom.
Michael Ponny, Downtown Management Company. The purpose of paragraph F was just to clarify that what compensation could come to the operator, and under the agreement right now, there is an administrative fee which covers actual costs. So, it's not compensation, it's a reimbursement of actual costs. The other fees that are available are from the net profits, if there are any, and that's always been in the agreement, that's the fifty-fifty split. The purpose of that paragraph F is just to clarify that there's no other compensation actually to the operator, that more than likely, the operator will never actually get any kind of compensation. They're going to cover the operating losses if there are any. They get reimbursed for their actual costs under seven point six E, but the only way they're going to actually get compensated for their time is through the fifty-fifty, if there is a profit. If that answers your question.
Sort of, I guess, but I don't know if there's going to be a clear answer on this. Then, on the, on my next question on page six, on two point one point three, the, we're going to change the prices, rates, and policies are to be established such as to promote tourism. Why would I do that? Page six, two point one point three, that the operator can adjust the prices, rates, and policies as deemed necessary. I mean, we've got bills to pay, too.
Again, the purpose of this is to get people in the door, and if, in order to get them in the door, you have to do the same type of competitive pricing that the RSCBA is doing to get them here into town, or otherwise, they're not coming at all. This gives the operator that ability. If the pricing is such that the facility is dark, that doesn't do the city any good, and obviously, it doesn't do the community any good.
If we're giving away the facility for free, which just seems to be what we're doing a lot of times, that doesn't do us any good either.
Again, it's to remain competitive with comparable facilities, so we're looking at what is done in the city to get tourists here.
I thought we built this thing because there was no comparable facility, which is why we needed the ballroom.
Pricing, we're talking about pricing, what we need to do to get them here. And again, the purpose is to be able to react to what the market conditions are doing. Just so that we don't have a dark facility gives the operator that flexibility, again, in line with the budget that the city manager's approving, to make sure we can try to get people here.
I guess my comment on that would be that was, when we did this agreement, we weren't subsidizing that with general fund lending, Mr. Mayor. That's a big difference now.
Any other questions?
Yeah, quick question from Mike. You said the hundred and fifty is reimbursement of actual costs. I understood that to be just a flat fee for indirect costs.
That's true. What we're saying is, we're not making a profit, we're not charging that fee above and beyond what it's costing. In fact, it's less than what it costs us to run it. If you would, you know, want to go through the exercise, and I can show you the detail of what, you know, my time, accounting time, purchasing, HR, background checks, you know, we don't charge insurance to the ballroom, we don't charge marketing to the ballroom, we don't charge website costs, we don't, you know, there's, I could go on and on, but there's all those costs.
What is the average of the indirect costs?
I estimate it around three hundred and thirty thousand, if you take a percentage of what the revenues are.
Yeah, what would be the percentage, do you know?
I didn't bring... It was about twelve percent. Oh, that's what you had in your staff report.
Right, but is that what yours is?
The hundred and fifty?
Hundred and fifty represents twelve percent of total expenditures for this facility, correct, Staff? And then, I just, and is that what you, I mean, you got to the twelve percent, because it must be what you have with respect to the rest of your facilities.
When I do it as a percentage, what it would run us on our revenues, yes, it was over three hundred thousand dollars, so it was more than double. I don't know what that, I don't have that percentage with me, what that runs out to.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Ms. Frazel?
Just, I do see a couple of concerns, just, no offense to our new city manager, but just taking away the whole authority from the city council. I understand that it's a quicker process to go straight to the city manager, but when you're talking about fees for the facility and potentially waiving or reducing those fees, I do think it's no different than a fee that comes to this council for approval, and you are dealing with a facility that is being paid for with taxpayer dollars, and a lot is coming from the general fund now for that facility, ten million in the last three years. So, I think that having some type of oversight by the council for especially paragraph two point one three and also the budget, I do think that the council should have review over that, even if it's a subcommittee to come back to us, Mr. Mayor, but I'm not comfortable, based on the general fund subsidy right now, is just handing over that authority and not having some kind of council review on the facility.
Certainly, that's going to be up to the discretion of council. I think the intention was that, when you look at this agreement in the bigger context, it's very definitive on what discretion the operator has on expenses and what expenses or discretion has on revenues. At the end of the day, if there's a loss, it's borne by the operator. So, you know, if there's concerns about, boy, you've overbudgeted these expenses, we have to pay them out of our own pocket. So, the risk, there is no risk to the city on that end. So, we believe it was, we were comfortable with...
Well, there is the risk that if we could make the profit, with all due respect, if we could get this facility profitable, then the general fund would be paying less of a subsidy every year, and I hope that's the goal of everyone in this room.
Absolutely is.
So, I think that by having that review, because right now, and I mean, that paragraph two point one point three on page six is problematic, and I think having that approval by the city manager to look at these rates, it does, if this facility makes a profit, then we split those profits, and I'm hoping that eventually, one day, it will, and there'll be no contribution from the general fund, is that was always anticipated with this facility, that it would not be subsidized by the general fund.
And I can certainly tell you that from the operator, we don't want to subsidize the losses every year. It doesn't help us. We want to make sure that this facility makes a profit. We propose this, we, you know, that the city manager is looking out for your best interests, and you have confidence in him. We thought that this would provide a streamlined approach. Obviously, our discretion is very limited by the contract, but ultimately, up to the council on how you think it's going to be best operated.
How's this going to hold up making deals and stuff? And then, is it going to have to come back to the council before they can make a deal or do something? That's tying their hands. Yes, Ms. Azzie?
Mr. Mayor, I'd sort of like to see that analysis of this agreement with the old agreement on financial portions of what we brought up. Do we think it's going to cost us more doing this, or do you think it's going to, we're just talking about words, but we've done no financial analysis of this. I mean, I'm a little, not being in the business, maybe what we just do is to say, well, let's just lease it to those guys for a certain amount of money per year, then their whole incentive is to be to make it profitable. You know, right now, this sharing thing, it's just not working for us. I mean, it really, it really hasn't been working for us very well, and I'm not saying it's a fault of anyone, but I don't know if we need to look at it a little bit differently and say, let's take the ballroom and lease it to this organization for so much a year, so we can see what it is, so we can budget our money, because we've been putting a lot of money into this from the general fund every year, and we know that downtown needs help, but they, the reason it's on the general fund is because the property taxes have dropped down so much in the downtown area, and I don't know how much we can continue to subsidize it. Is that simple? So, I'd like to see the analysis on the dollar figures of what we're talking about here. We're talking just, well, this means this, and this means this, but how does it, what does it mean in dollars?
Well, I guess my response would be, I'm not sure I understand what subsidy you're talking about. As you recall, the property owners contributed six point four million dollars in land and equipment. They dedicated that to the city in order for the ballroom facility to be built. Part of the agreement required that the operator cover any losses, so that the city isn't subsidizing anything if there is a loss. Clearly, we don't want it to lose money. It's operated at profits some years, some years it has not. Those years that it doesn't, that comes out of the operator's pocket, not the city's. That's how those costs are covered.
Yeah, we're talking about two different things, Mr. Ponny, though. This is the debt service on the bonds for the facility, and because the room tax rates have dropped so, so low, that, and because of the reassessments in the downtown area, we are unable to make those bond payments without a general fund subsidy. There was a five million dollar reserve put in place by the council, but that reserve is now gone. So, there's been a tremendous, and that number is going to continue to grow. I think it's two point seven this year, Mr. Manager. It's going to continue to grow in twenty twelve and thirteen and fourteen and fifteen. If you look at the projections, that subsidy could go up to five, six million dollars a year, and so, that's something, that's why I think this agreement is important for all sides involved, not just for the downtown properties, but also for the city taxpayers. We got to turn this thing around and get it going.
Well, and from looking at it at a profit standpoint of paying bonds, we got the same problem with the event center and the bowling stadium.
Yeah.
For those bonds, and I don't think that this is just, I mean, do we lease them out, or do we do this? But you lease them out for what the bonds are, I'm not sure anybody's going to take it anywhere. Ms. Hascheff?
Just to your point, Mike, I thought there was a carryover, that you're allowed to carry over the operating loss.
We are allowed to carry over operating losses one year if there's a profit the subsequent year.
Right.
And then, we can recoup some of the losses that we may have incurred that prior year.
Only if there's a profit the subsequent year.
Correct.
And then, it resets every year.
Correct.
Okay. Any more discussion? Chair Linder, do you have a motion?
Well, what would it take from Staff if we did redline it? I mean, is it that hard to do? I mean, I guess I'm trying to get to your point. The analysis, to me, it would be, I mean, we already have a redline draft that shows the changes, but you want some kind of fiscal analysis?
What does that, what does that mean? You know, like, and some of these are sort of vague, so I don't know how you do it, but if it just says that we get a management fee, it doesn't say how much it's going to be. Why wouldn't we just put that in the contract, so we could figure out what it is? How is that changing over the existing contract to this one? I can't imagine it's going to be the same as it is now, or we wouldn't make motions to put it in there. I'm assuming that it's going to cost the city more money to do this, and I might be absolutely wrong, but I'm assuming this is brought forward because it's going to cost us money, not because it's going to save us money as a city.
Well, I understand the hundred and fifty thousand, you know, flat fee, because that's their indirect cost, and it's apparently, you know, less by half what their indirect costs, their actual allocation. And it's apparently, you know, less by half what their indirect costs, their actual allocation is. I guess I would need to know more, Dave, about, I mean, at the end of the day, they have an operating budget that we basically, and I agree, I think we should approve it. And then that sets the standard. And then if there's an operating loss, they can only carry it forward only one year. And then that means they're eating every year's operating loss until there's a profit. And then they only see the benefit of that for one year. So, I mean, does staff have any response to that? I mean, has somebody done an analysis and say, these redline changes actually cost more money? Because it seems to me the budget process is still in place. They have to come back to us and we approve the budget. And if there's an operating loss, then they eat it.
For the record, Jill Olson, we have not done that analysis, but based upon the review we've done, we have not identified anything where we can see that there would be an additional cost impact to the city. In fact, the changes, the changes that were made, actually, we felt there would be, from an administrative standpoint, we felt that there would be cost savings, at least from an efficiency standpoint, for monitoring. We have been over there. We sent staff over probably about a year after the contract was in place to take a look at their procedures and to watch the flow of the transactions to make sure that everything could be tracked. And we plan to do that on a random basis. We do get their reports and we review their reports and we get, on a monthly basis, and then we also get their annual reports. We've not seen, we've not been able to identify a cost impact based of these changes. Now, from the operator's standpoint, there may be some cost impacts since this is the business that they're in. Should these changes not occur, they may be able to address those.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. President, you want to structure me on motion?
Well, is there any other comments, Mr. Mayor?
Any other comment? No other comment?
Yeah, whose ward is this in, by the way? Is this?
It's mine, actually.
Is it yours? Well, other than the financial analysis?
That's all I was looking, I don't know, I don't know if we've got to do this like in a week or a month, or if this is time sensitive. But I'd sort of like to follow up on some of our other questions we had and just get this all defined at one point.
I guess my question is, the financial side of it, is that taken care of more in the budget, though? I mean, what Dave's asking for? I mean, when the budget's submitted?
I guess here's how I follow up to you. We had a property acquisition on Fourth Street earlier in today's agenda where they talked about, by changing the contract, here's how much we're going to save, or here's how much it's going to cost us. Here's one that has potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars, and there's no financial analysis to it. That's all I'm saying, is there's no, well, we sort of think this and we sort of think that with no.
But I guess that's all I'm asking, is my question is, is the financial analysis more when the budget's submitted and we take a look at the budget? That's all, that's.
Well, some of the changes in this agreement won't let us really make modifications if we approve the agreement, I think. Like, do we let the city manager approve everything?
Well, no, I think Pierre, I think, said that he wants the city council to approve the budget also. So the budget, I think, at least what I'm hearing, is the budget would still come back to us for approval.
Why don't we do this? If you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to continue. We're going to meet next week. So let's just put it on the agenda for next week. Staff, why don't you just do another quick run-through? Make sure you red flag any potential financial issues. We do have to make the change that it needs to come back to us to approve the budget. I don't think it's time sensitive. So my motion would be to continue this item to next Wednesday. And then at that point, you need to make the change for city council approval and then give us some more analysis. I think at the end of the day, Dave, the answer is going to be the same. I think they're probably more cost savings than cost, any additional cost. But it's your ward, so that would be my motion to at least accommodate that request, and we're only losing a week.
Okay. I got a motion to have a second.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Have a second. All in, oops, discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and I would like to see if we can meet with Newco in the meantime and see if we can do something as far as getting, I mean, this was brought up a year ago, is potentially naming the facility. And doing things like that, really going out and marketing the facility and naming it, because I think that's a benefit to downtown, it's a benefit to all sides if we can get this thing in the black and operating well. But I think there's some things we've got to collaborate on to make that happen. And, I mean, we've talked about these things for a year or two, but I think we should sit down and really try and push and see what we can get moving as far as that facility.
Naming rights, not just that, bowling stadium and the event center.
Could I get staff to get me the dates of the last couple of times that we had this presentation so I can go look through my notes? I forgot what dates. They're not in the staff report of when we had that. Because I think part of this is just my misunderstanding what I heard then. I want to go review what I wrote down as far as if that changed.
All right, have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Chair Linderton, anybody got any public comment? Motion to adjourn the redevelopment? Oh, you got any future agenda items on redevelopment? Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. I'll call the Reno City Council back into the regular meeting. I think we're on item J5.
For the record, Maureen McKissick, City Manager's office. Item J5 is requesting council and direction on the reallocation of some CDBGs that are aging out or have become available. We have identified three projects which are eligible, and we would like council and direction on how to proceed.
Chair Linderton, a motion? These, the CAC, do we, I apologize, I didn't get a chance to look.
Let me go over a few of the high points, then. We have approximately $665,000 which will be available. We know that $300,000 of that is time sensitive and must be expended by April 30th. There's a menu of options on page two of your staff report. I'll go over each one of them. One would be an additional payment for the medium-term bond for the downtown. That is backed right now by CDBGs, approximately $400,000 a year. That would be one option. The second is a playground at Roger Corbett Elementary School. The school district, actually, we have a very poignant letter from the third grade class at Roger Corbett Elementary School requesting that we look at their playground and do some of the same types of improvements that we did at Echo Loader, which is possible. It is eligible, we can do that. We estimate the cost of that to be approximately $250,000. And third is improvements at Wilkinson Park, which is an older city park. And the cost of those improvements would be approximately the same, $250,000. So we can do a combination of one or two. If we want to do only the bond, that would meet the immediate April 30th deadline of $300,000, but others are possible. So we wanted your direction on how to proceed with those.
Chair Linderton, a motion to accept staff's recommendation on these projects. Oh, we'll pick all three of them.
And, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I wish we could.
Can you pick all three?
Mr. Mayor, I brought this forward on potentially paying the bond earlier because the, we don't know what's going to happen with CDGB funds. That's very scary to me. And so I think we're trying to show the public, we want to pay off as much debt as we possibly can. And I think going with option one, how much do we have left, Maureen?
Actually, I need to correct the staff report. There's a typo. That bond obligation ends in 2015.
Yes.
So we have a few more years to go.
No, no, I'm saying how much, but this would just be an additional payment towards our debt. I'm saying how much in CDGB do we need to reallocate?
I, what I'm requesting direction on right now is a minimum of $300,000, but you can go up to 665.
Okay, and then the two, the 665, the two that were, you had talked about, some had come, some were underachieving, the homeowner occupied rehabilitation, the homeowner, homebuyer down payment assistance. You talked about that. So this would be a, because people aren't participating in them. So this would be a reallocation of those funds as well?
Correct. I thought, I wanted to bring forward as many options as possible. Right now, we don't get this opportunity too often. So looking at everything that's on the table, we would have a total of $665,000 from those sources.
So, and then on staff, on two and three, because it sounds like we could choose one and an additional one under the funding that we have.
Correct.
And we have to do this or we're going to lose funds through HUD because we have, you guys had to put through the amendment process.
Correct, and that can take a few months. So we wanted to give ourselves as much lead time as possible. We really don't want to lose $1 if we can help it.
So on two and three, just not having enough information, Maureen, is there any matching funding out there? Or is that one that staff is suggesting over the other one? For example, the school district, are they, if we provide this CDGB money, do they have money they can expend towards the playground? Or should we go with Wilkinson Park? I know that we have some safety issues with the playgrounds out there. So I guess I'm looking for a little guidance from staff on which one to select in this case.
Well, I can tell you that the school district does not have funding available to do playground improvements. We had looked at that to be responsive, number one, to the letter from the school. And number two, thinking that it would benefit another agency. So that would be one factor to consider. For the Wilkinson Park, when we went to NAB 3 to discuss with them their thoughts on what they wanted, and we had originally thought they might bring forward improvements at Miguel Ribero, for instance, this was the one they focused on. Now, it would benefit the neighborhood, and there are a lot of children in that neighborhood, but it would essentially be an improvement solely for a city facility. Whereas at Roger Corbett, it would benefit the neighborhood as well as the school. So that's really all I can add to the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. President?
If I'm looking at these two parks, they're separated by Kitsky Lane is the way I'm looking at it. So I think we've done more on the west side of Kitsky. We've got Yori Park and all the other parks. If I was just looking at who would use these, I would be, I'd be more leaning toward Corbett Elementary. It's right across from Worcester High.
Yeah, that's true.
Because that would, because I don't want kids walking across Kitsky Lane, so that would make more sense to me if we were going to do one. That would be my only criteria for doing that. And there's another elementary school right close to Wilkinson, and that's Booth. So I think there's a lot, not a lot of parks, but there's more on that side of Kitsky than there is on the other side. That would be my recommendation.
Good point.
I like the two parks, but I like the, I like the community assistance center also, as you well know.
We've got to pay our bonds.
So I can't have all three of them.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve one and two for staff. I do think, listen, I would love to do both parks. In fact, they're both in my ward. But I think we have an obligation to pay off as much debt as we possibly can. So I would make that motion for one and two.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion?
Just quickly, Mr. Mayor, I was just trying to do the math. You say we have 665 available.
Correct.
Then we've got a $390,000, basically $400,000 payment on the bond.
Correct.
And then 250 left over for option two. So that still leaves us some money left over, doesn't it?
It does, but the most urgent is $300,000. Looking at how our funds are moving, $300,000 is what we have got to reallocate.
Right.
You can go up to the 665. So you could have technically done just an early payment on the bond and met that obligation. We just wanted, at this point, to bring back the option to do more.
So you'll come back, if there's still funds available, you'll come back to us?
If we run into timeliness again, yes, we absolutely will. And there is the potential working, I've been working with Parks and Recreation on both these projects, parks projects. We might be able to expend all of it on the park project.
How are we doing these bonds, I mean, this bond's being paid how now? You're just making an extra payment on the bond?
We would make one additional payment, correct. Retiring the CDBG obligation a year in advance.
And that's how many years from now?
We have four, at this point, four more payments, so that would reduce it to three. And that, we are committed to pay that out of CDBGs, $400,000 per year through that time. And as you know, the CDBG budgets at the federal level are somewhat uncertain.
Mr. Mayor, maybe amend my motion to essentially just putting the money, paying off the bond, but then leaving the remaining fund for the parks that staff has identified. So two, and then whatever's left over, does that, do you're concerned, Councilman Hashjaff?
No, I was thinking if there's additional money, we could just apply it towards the bond, whatever. I don't know if it's going to cost 250 or not for the park. You would eventually bring that back to us if it's less.
If it's less, if there's any shift in these numbers, we'll, of course, come back for reallocation direction.
Okay.
No, I'm okay with the original motion.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, item K1, any boards or commission appointments? Financial board.
City clerk or, in this case?
They haven't voted yet.
They haven't? Okay, I'll continue, Mr. Mayor, till we hear from the fat.
Ward two.
Mr. Mayor, for Central, the appointment of Ian Anderson. And the Ms. Norgard actually would be either Ward three or five, not Ward two. So I'm sure she'll be referred and she can apply for one of those. But I move to accept or to appoint Ian Anderson.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ward two, south?
Move to appoint Trey Abney.
Have a motion, second. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ward one, southwest?
Move to reappoint David Ville.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Identification of future agenda items? Ms. President?
I was going to say, Mr. President, we're meeting on Tuesday. Probably wouldn't hurt to update the council on next Wednesday's agenda on where we're at with baseball. Maybe we can talk about the waiver on Tuesday's meeting of that space.
Okay. Any others? Mr. Dorich?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, during the last legislative session, there were some changes made regarding the pawn shops. On one, on how much interest they could charge, and the other was in regards to, I think, the timeline. I think it's, it used to be 120 days, and now it's 90. Our language and our code mirrors whatever NRS is for the interest rate, but it doesn't for the timeline. So we just need an amendment to change that. I'm not sure what that timeline's called, but.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. That would be direction to pursue an ordinance.
So, on the next agenda?
Okay. Any others? Ms. President?
Yeah, and I don't know, I would like this, I don't know if Tracy, City Attorney's Office, can do this by next week or our first meeting in December. I don't want this to fall through the cracks as the animal, our motion from earlier, on an update on where we are with those funds. Time is of the essence. And then also, Mr. Mayor, I think that we might want to have staff come up this year with some areas of the charter that potentially need to be changed. And we have one shot to do that during a general election, because it either has to be done by legislation or by legislation or by a vote of the people. One that comes to mind, maybe the city clerk's position. Right now, that position is an employee of the council. Maybe it should be under the city manager, or maybe it should be an elected position. I just think there's some things in the charter that need to be updated, that the charter hasn't been updated in quite some time. And I don't know if staff's had time to go through the charter, but, because we're going to need to know those things if we want to go out to a vote of the people on some charter changes. And I don't know, Mr. Mayor, where you are on the ward-only elections. Are we going to bring, because again, we've got to bring that forward rather soon so we can make the deadline in time. And I'd like to have some public input on that. And I think we should have a town hall here at the city, is my last agenda item, Mr. Mayor. I think we need it. It's overdue. Mr. Mayor, I think we need it. It's overdue to talk about animals, fire, the overall health of the city. And I hope we can do that soon as well.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, as to the animal control item, that only gives us like two working days before the next meeting. So if we could do that on the first, or three working days counting tomorrow.
No, you've got Thursday, Friday, Monday, and Tuesday.
So we would appreciate if that was first meeting in December.
I know it is, I know it is. And you're absolutely correct on the ward district. We need to start doing some stuff on that and working and looking and seeing what the council wants to do.
By all means, there's been a huge public outcry.
Oh, yes, yes. They're roaring. Okay, never mind. All right, any other agenda items? All right, any liaison reports?
One quickly, Mr. Mayor, the financial advisory board took a vote at the last meeting requesting, they got a presentation on Rosewood Lakes Golf Course and just wanted to let the council know that they wanted us to make sure we took a, made sure that the use of that facility, the additional nine holes, was going to be the best and highest and best use for the property. So I just would relay that to the council. That's it.
Okay. Any others? Reports on any conference or professional meetings? Adam L. Five. Mr. Assey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we got a, we got an update on this, at least a little bit about what staff's recommendation was. But I'd, last meeting, I told you that I had a meeting with University, and they may be interested, the School of Fine Arts up there, having one of those buildings be a gallery for their, for what they can do. So there's a lot of options there that we haven't really moved forward on this. I think it was May, or April, May, or March even, that we suggested looking at putting save officers over there, and that never got anywhere. I haven't seen any report on it, and it wasn't in the report that was done. So I think that that's something we, I'd love to look at, is whether we can make those galleries. But something's got to move forward on this thing to get those fences down, particularly if the women bowler's going to be here in April. I'd love to clean that place up. I think a gallery would be a great addition there. They said that they would be, they would love to have their students down there. They would offer to have their, the students be there all the time to make sure that it's not damaged or in any way. We've got to start looking at that a little more seriously, I think, before next spring.
Yes.
So I don't know whether I need staff time to do that, or they're just going to start doing it, or we, I honestly don't know how to proceed on this one. Except for, we've brought it up numerous times here.
We need to turn it over to the city manager and let him come up with some stuff and give him a period of time to work on it.
Okay.
Well, I think.
Oh, I'm going to give him more than three days.
Andrew, are you a veteran?
No.
Oh, you can work Friday then.
We're all in prayer Friday. All right. Discussion, L seven. Mr. Frazo.
Mr. Mayor, is that the, I'm sorry, I've lost track here.
That's.
This is on the, I did meet with the representatives, and I put this on the agenda. And since we have had a legal briefing on this earlier today, and there are some problems with this. And so I think we've got to hash this out here at the council meeting, because I can understand the concerns from the City Attorney's Office, quite frankly. So we've got both parties here today, and let's air it out, Mr. Mayor. So that's what this is for. I think the City Attorney's Office is recommending not to move forward with the proposed assignments without a bond. But I guess that would be the first step, is hearing maybe the past or what we're doing with this particular agreement. Tracy.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, we have a letter that went over to Corona Cyan's attorney recently. And I believe Craig Scott spoke to Doug Flowers, so he would have the most current update on that. But as a background, what this is, is Centex was the master developer in this planned unit development by name Bella Vista. Under those obligations, there are two agreements. There's a park agreement, and there's a fire station agreement. And the construction of a park is a over fourteen acre park at that location. And then there's a public facility site that would have a fire station on it as well. The obligation to build the fire station is a full turnkey fire station that would be similar to the one located in Cold Springs, which is a pretty substantial facility. Our estimations from the fire department to construct that facility are probably somewhere between two and a half and three and a half million, depending on the value of the dollar at the time, the construction costs, the materials, and all of the other matters. The planned unit development phase one is slated for a maximum of one thousand five hundred and seventeen units. So there is likely insufficient funding in that, but the obligation to build the fire station still remains on the developer, even if the unit fees of a thousand per unit do not come into the account. There is assignment language in there, and as part of that language, in both agreements, the park agreement and the fire station agreement, the city can look at reasonable bonding. And so the City Attorney's Office is recommending adequate security to protect the city and the residents who live in the area, and some other matters. We do understand that there is constraints in the market, and we've been trying to see if there was a mutually agreeable way to work out a recommendation that addresses both parties' concerns. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy City Attorney Craig Scott to give you the latest on what was sent over to Mr. Flowers.
Thank you, Tracy. Craig Scott, Reno City Attorney's Office. Both myself and Rob Boni have been working on this, Rob on the fireside, me on the park side. And there've been a lot of issues on the bonding issue. One of the issues that we have, are at a disagreement about is the question of when a duty to construct the park would occur, because that would be the trigger for when a bond would come in. If we don't have a set date for it, then it could be set off forever. The developers, at this point, are looking to do it based on a certain number of units. One of the concerns is they could go up one unit short of that and then simply not do anything more on it, and then we would never have a trigger of the bond. So we're looking at a date and trying to work out a reasonable time there. For parks, we're looking, we're asking for five years right now. Fire?
And Rob Boni, City Attorney's Office. For fire, we were asking that construction begin no later than January first, two thousand twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Two thousand twenty-five, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you know, I don't think we're going to negotiate this at the table here.
No, Mr. Mayor, hang on though. Can I hear from, can we hear from the developers?
Oh, I'd like to hear from the developers. They've got something to say because.
That, it really comes down to, and we, again, we had our legal, this really exposes, the problem is, this exposes the city for the ability, by us transferring this, the ability to go after the master developer in this case. And who suffers is the constituents out there who are buying their homes. We have a park agreement, and I thought it was just a simple transfer. And that's why I put it on the agenda.
Okay.
But it's not a simple transfer, and I'd like the opportunity for the developers' representatives to come up, present their case, because they have had some issues with this. So that's why it's on the agenda today, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Larry Lucero with the Corona Land Company. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, city manager. Happy to be here. We're really prepared to make much of a presentation today. We were here mostly to listen, and we appreciated this item being put on the agenda. We've been dealing with this assignment since April of two thousand eight. We've, informed the city at that time of our purchase of the assets from Centex Homes. And we've been working on and off with the city staff since that time to effectuate approval of the assignments. The, there are two agreements, a fire agreement and a park agreement. I'd like to read from section five point three of the fire station agreement. It says, "Developer may assign this agreement to a joint venture, limited liability company, or partnership in which developer is a member or partner without city's approval." Centex Homes was a partner in this venture up until this summer. So from that point in time till now, it's our position that the city doesn't really have an approval authority over this fire agreement. Centex has now left that partnership, and so I don't know what happens in that event. We do agree that the city has the opportunity in this assignment, and we've always agreed in our discussions with the city, to post a bond. That is addressed in section five point four. So we have no issue with putting a bond forth on this. Our challenge has come with a lot of other issues that have been raised in both the park and the fire agreement about when they should be built. This agreement on the fire is conditioned upon unit count. We have no reason at this juncture to renegotiate, nor do we have an ability to renegotiate on Centex's behalf, because right now, Centex is the party of interest in this agreement, in the city's view. In our view, Centex has assigned it to us. It's been, it's been the city attorney's position that Centex is the party of interest. So we want to get that clarified first, and if the, if the city attorney feels that it has to be approved by your council to have the discussion with us, we're fine with that. Do that, and we'll begin the discussion with you. It's our position that this agreement has already been formally assigned to us, and that's the status of that one. The park agreement specified a date of completion of that park of, I think it was June of two thousand seven. No, December thirty-first of two thousand seven. We then purchased the property and endeavored to find out what was the status of developing the park. Apparently, there has never, there had never been any agreement between the city and the developer on when the park should be built. And obviously, the economy was going in the wrong direction. So our position.
Did you say when the park was supposed to be built? You said by two thousand and seven.
It was, yeah, the.
So you're trying, you're saying we need to get together and tell you what kind of park we want to build?
We have designed the park.
Okay.
It has been approved by your staff.
Okay.
And we are.
Why aren't you building it?
We are fine with going forward with building it. It was our understanding that the city, and I have this only secondhand from people at Centex, that the city was interested in making the park smaller and slowing down the construction of the park. Since there are no people out there to speak of, we have about three hundred homeowners today, because of the cost of maintenance of the park and security issues on the park, because there are no people around out there. So that was a discussion we got into with, you know, when should we build the park? And it's our position, just because the economy is uncertain, that we would like to trigger it with a unit count, just the way that the fire station is triggered. The, the city then.
The unit count on fire stations is what?
Excuse me?
Units count on fire station, what does it say?
I think it's fourteen hundred and fiftieth unit is.
And you got three hundred built?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, the fire agreement has construction to start at the thirteen hundredth unit and to be completed at the fourteen fiftieth unit. And in addition, when Mr. Lucero is done, if you give legal an opportunity to respond, we'd appreciate it.
Sure.
So our, our position was, you know, try to work through all of these issues with staff, and we tried very hard to do that. The staff has brought up issues of requiring us to build at prevailing wage, which we think are policy issues that this board should address. We think their requirements would be very detrimental to development in the city of Reno. So we just thought, at this juncture, it would be, and they were also asking us to make amendments to our plan to rezone property in our, in our master plan to commercial, so that the city could sell that property to the benefit and take those proceeds. And frankly, we don't really want the city doing our planning for us on our property. We would be very happy to resolve, and we made a formal proposal to the city in May after convening with Mr. Robert Sater of South Meadows Properties and Mr. Perry DiLoreto, of getting together with the city to try to formulate a one-station solution that could actually be funded and built, so you could get a fire station out there, which I know is a need. We recognize that need, and we support getting that done. We just didn't see any benefit of making changes to our plan, when knowing full well that the final solution is probably going to be different. So we made that suggestion. We would, we would love to participate in that effort, and we're here to do that. We think, first of all, in order for us to do that, it should be assigned from Centex, so we're the party of interest. So that was our proposal, to let's get these assigned. We're happy to post the bonds as required, so that the city is secure.
Thank you very much. Legal?
Mr. Mayor, if I may start on the fire agreement portion. Legal is going to have to agree to disagree with Mr. Lucero's interpretation of that article, because there's another section in that article that indicates if, at the time of the assignment, the work has not been performed, which is the case here. The city may require a performance bond or other security as it deems appropriate to secure the assignee's obligation to perform the work in an amount equal to the shortfall between the funds in the account and the projected cost of the work. If you keep the trigger at the large number of units, we can never trigger the security. So why would we legally recommend to this council that that security is appropriate if we have no way to access it? So we're going to have to disagree on that one. However, we will continue to work as council directs, and we hope to reach a resolution on this. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Scott on the park.
Craig Scott, City Attorney's Office. Mr. Mayor, I have sometimes referred to you as your honor because of litigation practice. I feel like this is a rebuttal.
I kind of like that.
This time, so your honor.
What seems to be the problem? I like the way they do it in Canada.
In that case, your honor.
No, no, we won't do that.
In fact, may it please the court. Just a couple of points that are in response to what Mr. Lucero brought up, and again, respectfully disagree to some extent here. One of the points is that there, in the parks agreement, there is an express provision that says that your approval is required for any assignment. So that is in the agreement. He did talk about, you know, the, the party of interest and who that is. Well, right now, the party of interest, because the assignment hasn't been approved, is Centex. Centex, as you know, is a very large nationwide company with lots of assets. There has been some indication that this, that the assignee may be interested in getting an assignment with as few restrictions as possible and flip it over. His letter to city council or to Ms. Frazo suggested that, gee, all you need to do is get an assignment, then, then we can start really dealing. But there's a real issue about that. Our negotiating position, once we've done the assignment, really falls off drastically. Question about the park size and maintenance. There have been discussions and a slight downsizing. That was at the developer's request, was my understanding. Unfortunately, the former planner is no longer with the city, and Julie Conway, the director, is out this week. So they're not here to speak with, to that specifically. But some discussions along those lines proved to, it's my understanding, that those were mutually agreeable within the limits of protecting the rights of the people who are out there. And there's like, what are, three hundred and fifty people out there who had a, an expectation that they would have had a park several years ago. So we're trying to work towards making sure that that happens as soon as it, as it can. So I think, unless there are questions, those are just some of the points, and I know there are others, but those are probably the principal ones.
I think this, personally, I think this has got some negotiations to go with legal counsel and the developer. And I don't think we're going to solve this issue here today. And I think we should send it back and give you a timeline to get back to us on the pros and cons and what we can do and can't do, because he says that we don't have the right to approve, and so we need to look at those things and give you time to do it. Mr. Assey?
Can I ask Mr. Lucero one question? And thank you for meeting with me prior to this. But after meeting with you, I am confused about one part that you're saying is, you can't negotiate some of these because you're not a party to the agreement, correct?
Correct.
But at the same time, you want us to change the terms of the agreement as far as unit count?
The, the assignment agreement that specified, where it is specified, one of the assignments has Centex's signature as the third party to the agreement. So they are involved in that. What our problem is, is communicating with Centex. They were merged with Polte and functionally no longer exist. They were merged with Pulte and functionally no longer exist. So, we talk to Pulte staff when we can get their attention, but they are not at the table with us, because in their view, they've walked away from this, except they hold the account that has the fire fees deposited in it.
But my question is, if you're saying that we can't negotiate with you until it gets transferred to you, I would think that we'd have to keep the whole thing intact and not make any changes until you're the assignee. Because you can't say, we only want to negotiate these points, we want to negotiate, but on the other hand, since we're not a party to it, that's what confuses me, is either we can, and I think what we ought to do is sit down and try to negotiate something, because everything is changing, and say, we'll agree to this assignment, but fire stations, we've talked about that, but I think that there's some inconsistencies for me about, confusion on my part, I guess, is what I'm seeing.
I understand. It would seem to me that the, and again, not speaking from a legal perspective, but it would seem to me that the only item that would need to be addressed for sure in the assignment would be in the park agreement, since the date for completion of the park had already passed prior to. So, I would think at least that item should be addressed in the assignment, so it's not an agreement that is nonsensical.
But if we can do that, then I think for me, is you're saying that we can address anything in the assignment. Not, you, that's all I guess.
Mr. Aziz?
Yeah, I guess it's a chicken and egg, because I think we probably do need to get something moving with respect to this assignment. And the question I would have for our staff is, if you're correct that Centex basically has merged and is now with Pulte Homes?
Yes.
Then, and they have another, they've assigned everything that they had in this project to you, including these agreements presumably?
Yes.
So, and I'm assuming that in our fire station agreement and the parks agreement, just because they assign it doesn't mean Centex doesn't have any more responsibility to get this thing done, that staff needs to follow up with Centex and Pulte to make sure that they still understand that they're on the hook. That'd be one. And then, the copy of the assignment that I received indicated in the fire, at least in the fire contract, it says upon, this is with respect to the bond, it says upon full execution of the assignment, Corona shall deliver the city a performance bond for the work. So, it's concurrent with the assignment, so we're not chasing the bond, it looks like.
Tracy Chase, it's how you trigger the bond. If the duty to construct is at the 1450th unit, they can not reach that unit, and then the city of Reno could never trigger the security. And so, how can I recommend that's an adequate bond as an attorney to this council?
And then, what about with respect to the parks? Because then it says, prior to construction of the park site, then they post the bond. Is that what you're suggesting needs to be changed?
I'll turn the park over to Mr. Skaw. He is more familiar with that agreement.
Yes, it does say that, and your suggestion sort of hints at where we are at here, your question, and that is who we should be dealing with at this point, because Centex and perhaps whoever they merged into because of the merger are in default under the agreement. If we are able to work something out and approve the assignment, then we don't need to go back and deal with Centex, and we've been taking that approach. But you are correct that at this point, it is Centex who is in default, so we can have these negotiations and either, you know, potentially simply sue Centex or enter into negotiations with Centex, but to the extent we could potentially work something out with the assignee, then that is a solution for everybody. But we may have to go around it. You're correct, we may have to go back to the original contracting party to pursue this.
And then, prevailing wage isn't an issue unless we have to execute on the bond and then build the facility ourselves, right?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. We have a case we're looking at, and we have sent out information that may affect it, and that's more of the parks issue, to attorneys on the other side, and we're inviting them right now to provide us additional information. So, we will have a memorandum out to you once we receive that information. On the fire agreement, I think that prevailing wage, there may be a question one way or another. For example, if you put additional money into it, like if, just for example, a different fire station, if the city of Reno moved funds or took funds and then contributed to that fire station, I think it would trigger the prevailing wage requirement when you're looking at the big picture down here. And we're still looking at whether the prevailing wage requirement would be on this, because they construct, they own the land, they control the account, and they do a donation at the end. There's no city money going into it.
So, how do we get to yes on this?
Really, on the fire station one, what we recommended is a deadline on a date if they don't construct by a certain date. So, if the bond is in place, then we can trigger the bond, and so that then we do not incur the risk of someone stopping short of build-out by one unit or two units or whatever. So, the fire one was much simpler.
But that language is already in the Centex agreement, right?
No, it is not. It has the build-out as the unit, at the 1450 unit has to be constructed and given to us, but there's no trigger date.
And that exists in the current Centex agreement?
That's correct.
There's no trigger date?
But in the assignment language, it says, if the work is not performed, you can request adequate security. And part of adequate security is the able, the ability to access that security.
Right. No, I understand. Okay.
Mr. George?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, kind of similar train of questions. Currently, under the Centex agreement, though, there's, if they never got to the 1450th unit, then we'd never get a fire station.
Tracy Chase, they still, you are accurate. Centex Homes, this agreement was negotiated and agreed to when there was better times in the city, and there certainly, that's why we've been willing to discuss other options about possibly consolidating or streamlining sites and things like that, because we recognize those issues. And that's part of why this has taken a while to negotiate, because we explored alternatives.
And it sounds, maybe I'm wrong, but it sounds like we're pretty close on the parks agreement. Am I right or wrong?
Well, are we? Not if they're talking a smaller park. And whoever, if it was the developer or staff that proposed the smaller park, it was approved at this level, at council level, as a 14-acre park.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager, for the record, Randy Walter, with Places Consulting. I was involved in the redesign of the park from 14 acres to eight acres. That was at the request of the Parks Department. The reason it was at the request of the Parks Department is because they were looking at a maintenance issue long-term for that park. We basically took the same facilities that were originally included. We have a complete set of construction plans ready to pull a permit several years ago now, but we did have a set of plans ready to pull for permit. We took that same plan, reduced it to eight acres, had the same facilities, the same provisions for the public that were in the original plan, just with a whole lot less acreage and a whole lot less maintenance costs. That was at the request of the city Parks Department. A year and a half ago, I believe, about that, is when we had that final set of construction plans, preliminary plans, and cost estimates in place, and the Parks Department told us that all it would take at that point was to go back and modify the agreement, do the agreement so that it related to an eight-acre park instead of a 14-acre park. That was a year and a half ago. We've not gotten any further than that until recently, and we now have a whole nother set of conditions, because we now no longer have the same Parks person involved, we've got different Park people involved, and they want to change the whole plan of the park and how it's done, and all these other things that we don't even understand where it's coming from. So, that's the little history of where we've been with this project. We've been working on this with staff for a year and a half, almost two years that I've been involved, and we're no further away than we were two years ago.
Jeff, can you, I feel like we're at a bit of a disadvantage in that the designer and Julie are gone, so hopefully you've got some information? Do you have history with it?
For the record, Jeff Mann, Parks Recreation Community Services. I've been involved in this process since the beginning. I haven't been the lead negotiator for the department. That was the Parks Planner, who's no longer here, as well as a former director, however. I've been in the process the entire time. Both parties are correct about the reduction in the size of the park. We had a maintenance issue because of the change in economy and our staffing. We can't maintain 14 acres anymore. However, the developer had an issue with constructing a 14-acre park. The original agreement that was approved between the city and Centex Homes was for a 14-acre park costing about $2 million, and I'm going off of memory on some of these figures, but it was significantly more than what the RCT would generate. And Centex Homes, like Somerset, was going to contribute those additional funds to build the park that they were proposing and we had agreed to. Given the change in the economic conditions and the assignment to Corona, Corona didn't have the funds, nor would RCT generate enough to build a 14-acre park as designed. So, not only did the new developer request a reduction, we agreed to it for different reasons, but we both agree that a smaller park is probably necessary.
If I may, Craig Skaw from the City Attorney's Office, just add a little bit to that. As a part of that, one of the things we've been trying to work on is that the developer would take this, whatever we could try and agree to, would take it back to the PUD through the process, so that it would have the blessing and notice and so forth with everybody. So, it would have gone through the whole public process to modify what you had approved as the original PUD.
And I understand it now, and I get what you're saying, Mr. Mayor. Really, Centex is on the hook for the difference. So, we're just helping out the developer here if we amend this agreement, because technically they have to pick up the RCT, and they're on the hook for a 14-acre park. And I understand those were staff discussions, but ultimately, the council decides based on what we hear from our constituents, on what kind of park they wanted, there would have been a change. And so, I don't see how this benefits the city if we're going to change this assignment agreement. Really, it kind of lets Centex off the hook, in my opinion, of building what they're required to do under the existing PUD. And I think we have more success after going after them, as Mr. Skaw had indicated, than we do right now. And so, I'm very concerned about moving forward with these assignments, because I'm not sure what's in it for the neighborhood out there.
And I guess I misunderstood earlier, because I thought you had said that you were ready to build the park, but we are the ones that put it on hold. I mean, I guess if that's the case, I mean, whatever date we pick as a drop-dead date to get this thing built, as long as you put up a bond for it, I don't see what the holdup would be at that point in time.
With regard to the park agreement, I think you're absolutely right.
Well, I just said a minute ago that I thought we were close on the park agreement, and you said no.
Well, we have a prevailing wage issue that-
That issue's going to have to be resolved, and I guess the attorneys are talking about that.
But I don't think, I think the park agreement has actually gotten held up, because it's been tied to the fire agreement.
Right, so that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to separate them and see where we're at. So, I mean, if we pick a date, I mean, because really, it should have been built by now, but by what I'm hearing, staff agreed that it probably needs to be delayed, because there's not, there's no one out there, and you guys were comfortable with, obviously comfortable with the delay. So, if we pick a date in the future that says, okay, the park's got to be built by X date, you'll put a bond up for that, and you're fine with that?
Yeah, I think that's acceptable.
So, to me, that solves the park agreement issue.
We don't really have any big desire to shrink the park. We are fine with the park and the size that it is.
Right.
The city's fine with maintaining it. That's fine.
And then, if staff decides that they want a different design or something else over the next, whatever many years we put this out at, then we can make those changes, I would assume. Correct? I mean, as long as, we're going to have them bond for a certain dollar amount of a park, I would assume.
We probably could. All the plans are subject to city approval, so-
Right, so if staff decides at some point in time that this eight-acre park makes more sense than the 14-acre park, we could, you would design it to that effect, and we would move forward with the eight-acre park.
Yeah, there are specifications that are part, are attached to the original-
And those would probably have to be amended in the PUD also, correct?
Probably, yes, if there are changes, yes.
Right, but we could get the assignment done based upon what the original PUD was, get a bond in place. We'd have to pick a date that it would have to be built by, and my assumption would be we'd still go by a unit count or certain date, whichever is sooner.
Yeah, Tracy Chase, we'd like both. So, if one doesn't occur for some reason, that's why we wanted the date trigger, so that then you can access the security.
And do we have any idea what date we'd want? I mean, is that the 25-day?
I'm interested in 25 years.
We've told them that for parks, that we would want them to start in five years, and they have not indicated a willingness to set a date, but have stuck with their-
They think they're saying they're okay with that right now?
Until today, yes.
Right, that's fine. So, we would set a date of, say, 2016, so the bond would be in place, and built by 2000, I don't know, by the end of 2016? Is that what you're thinking?
Right now, what we're proposing is the start date on 2016 with one-year completion.
So, start by 2016 with a completion by December of 2017. Okay? I mean, is that, I mean, to me, that sounds reasonable. I mean, I don't know how everyone else feels, but we've got, I mean, by putting the bond in place, we've got the security we need.
They have to have the bond before we do the assignment, right?
Yeah, Tracy Chase, you know, I would recommend like a mutual exchange. The bond could be waiting there, we could have possession of it.
I don't expect us to have the agreement done today. I'm just, I think we need to provide direction. I think this thing's gotten held up, and I think we need to provide direction on how we're going to get through this. To me, that, to me, what is just being proposed sounds reasonable.
Yes, sir.
Just to make comment, my experience of late with bonding companies is they want an agreement in hand upon which they should bond. So, if it could be a 30 days, you know, within a-
I think we can work those. What I'm hoping to do is provide staff with the direction of moving this thing forward. And it sounds like we're all in agreement on, I don't know how Tracy feels about what we just said, but-
Yeah, Tracy Chase, you can draft clauses that make the assignment contingent on bond placement. I mean, you can do those types of, if you let us do the legal work on that, we could absolutely protect the city's interests.
I mean, that sounds like everything you're looking for.
Sure, that's exactly what we're looking for, is to make sure there's adequate security for the build-out.
Mr. Aziz?
It seems to me, Mr. Mayor, that they've been frustrated with this process, and they brought it to councils, and we want to move forward with that, and I think there's been some, not miscommunication, but a lot of communication without council involvement. And I would say that we should have some more negotiations and maybe look at this whole thing brand-new again, because the world has changed, and maybe we do tie in fire and parks and figure out where we're going to build our fire stations. But I would say let's include Councilwoman Zadra and Frazza, since it's sort of in both their words right now, not as a formal subcommittee, but to be informed on some of those discussions and come forward with what your recommendation is. I'm a little concerned that staff has recommended we chop a park down in half as to what we approved here at council.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I suggested, yeah.
And so, I think that if you two were at the table, we might be able to work some global arrangement out and say, let's just start fresh and see what we need now.
I think the fire is a much bigger issue.
Correct.
And I would really like to hear from the chief. We heard the proposal that, you know, maybe we could take the piece that's further west and whatever, that we call the Sater property, as well as Perry's, you know, that we take, stations were proposed and allocations from the developers have been pending forever. And then, we've got the one much further on the other side of the South Meadows area, Veterans and Steamboat, where Perry DiLoreto is working. And there was reference that maybe we should just throw all of the dollars into that one location there further north. Is that something that we can legally do and that would work for you?
Councilwoman Zadra, can we have these, I think it's difficult today to do this. Can you and I have these discussions with staff and then have the fire chief involved and the Parks Department, and then come back? I mean, it's my district now, but depending on what the council does, it very likely could go into your district. And I think that it would be more prudent if we could sit down and have staff, so they can do the analysis, and then we can go from there on what's best for out there. Because we don't know yet how, I want to know how much is actually in those pots of money from all the different developments, and maybe it could be a win-win to get the fire station built out there. I don't know, but I think you and I at the table will make it happen.
Well, then, there's been talk that we need the two fire stations in that area, and this would be one of the key ones, and the other would be Mr. DiLoreto's location. Those would be our two principal. But I do like the idea, we're not going to sit here and design a camel today, so I do like the idea of you two people getting together with staff, and y'all sit up and get these meetings. Let's get something going, since we've been talking- Let's get something going since we've been talking about this since '08. We ought to be able to come up with something. But I don't like the idea of staff cutting down sizes of parks or fire stations or anything out without us knowing about them at least. Because when we do the PUDs, we do specify what we want and arbitrarily taking them out isn't really a good thing. And I don't like that. So I would like to table this. I would like to have the subcommittee meet with staff. No, not a subcommittee, I'm sorry. It's not a subcommittee. I would like these two individuals to meet with them and staff and everybody.
I would agree with that approach, Mr. Mayor. And just for the city attorney's perspective, I would like to know if Syntex is still on the hook. I think they are. So even if we do an assignment, I still think they still need to be on the hook. I'd like you to kind of true that up when you come back to us.
And whether it's Syntex or Palti or whoever it is.
I would like to stress that we'd like to get this back in front of us as soon as possible. I mean, I think these guys have been working on this for a while.
I think the second...
And I think we found out tonight that we're a lot closer on this parks agreement than we thought we were coming in. I mean, so I think, I think we can move this along. It ultimately is going to be a decision by the council, not by staff.
Yep, that's right.
And so I think we need to make it here. So I would like to try and get it back to us as soon as possible.
What, the second week in December? Second meeting in December?
That'd be great if we can get it back that quick.
Mr. Frazzi, your schedule okay?
The second week, I'm just working on it.
Oh, come on. Oh, that's right.
So what we're doing under this agenda item though is authorize staff to spend more than two hours to work on this, is that what I'm...
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
I think they've already spent more than two hours on it.
They've already spent two hours this afternoon.
I just don't want to spend another two hours right here.
Back to the second meeting in December?
Which is our second meeting on the 28th?
No, it's the second week.
No, 28th, that's right.
Second week.
I'm sorry, I thought you said second meeting in December.
It's the second week. Or the first and second weeks in December.
Oh, we don't? Okay.
You wanted 30 days off for Christmas, so we're getting them for you.
I don't want a meeting every week.
Oh, go, just get on, get on your calculator again.
The fourth week, so Sharon and I have a meeting before the 28th.
Yep. All right. Somebody give me a little motion to that effect, Mr. Azzi?
I'll move to approve staff time.
Continue and approve staff time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank y'all for your patience. Sorry to keep you dragged here all day. I was trying to figure out what you were doing here. All right, let's go. Animal control, we've taken care of.
I don't know, what's that say?
You're probably going to get put off another week. Discussion, direction, mutual aid, and Mr. Azzi with the fire department stuff, automatic aids, fire...
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I believe that the city of Reno should move forward and have the chief, give some direction to the chief to come forward to us with what we expect to get from the county for mutual aid and automatic aid. I'm not sure if we've been doing that. Chief, I have one question for you. Have we been in active negotiations with the county regarding these?
With respect to automatic aid?
Yes, and mutual aid.
Short answer is no. We have, last month, the Board of County Commissioners, for the record, Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief. The Board of County Commissioners at their last meeting in October was approached by the mayor during public comment, and the mayor challenged the assumptions that the county was making with respect to service delivery and most specifically with the respect, with respect to automatic aid and how the county was building a system that was heavily dependent on auto aid. Subsequent to your comments, Mr. Mayor, we did receive notice from the county staff a couple of days later that they wanted to set up some meeting dates. We checked our calendars and we synced our calendars and we agreed on a date of the 15th of this month. With respect to actually sitting down and saying, this is what we're prepared to offer, this is what we think is equitable, et cetera, we have not had those discussions. Now, with that, Councilmember Azzi, Reno staff has been working on a variety of plans and we plan to deliver a staff, a rather robust staff report, likely mid to late December, that will cover the entire, that will cover the entire spectrum with respect to no auto aid, all the way to fee-based auto aid. This is a new area for the fire service. Typically, auto aid is one-for-one mutually beneficial for both parties. In this particular case, Truckee Meadows is relying on auto aid as a basis for standard service. We will be producing a staff report that'll be relatively robust, that'll explain the pros and cons of each alternative, and then we'll allow council to debate and provide direction to our staff.
Would you be doing that at our second meeting in December?
We can shoot for that date, yes, sir.
That'd be great because then we're...
Mr. Mayor, the reason I asked that one question was, the county had an open house last Thursday, and when I asked that question, they said that we were in active negotiations with the city of Reno on these two things. They're misinforming the public as to where we are in these negotiations. They have not happened at all. And even after you went and spoke to them. And I, Chief, I got to tell you, I think that December is too late for this. We've had six months to understand what we're going to do with mutual aid and automatic aid. I don't know if we should be negotiating with the county right now. You should be coming to the council, say, here's what I recommend that we approach them with to start with, and say, this is what it's going to be. I got a letter today, an email that was CC'd to me, that someone wrote a letter to the county, and this was the response from the chairman. I'm going to read the whole thing. Thanks for your comments. The recommendations you enclosed are exactly where we're headed. Our goal is regionalization of fire service. And yes, it has to be on our terms because we can't afford to do it on anyone else's terms. They have no interest in negotiating with us, none at all. So we have to just say, here's what we're willing to do. We can't wait until April or May or June. And if you wait until the middle of December and you just shoot for a meeting, then we're off another month. I think it absolutely has to come forward. I don't need the whole global thing. I think we just have to do even one or two of those things as soon as we can. The other thing they're doing is, yesterday's meeting, they are sort of forbidding their members to go meet with the JFAB, to the CABs and the NABs in direct violation of our agreement. Our agreement says that the joint fire advisory boards shall solicit and consider input from the neighborhood advisory boards, the citizen advisory boards, and representatives of the collective bargaining units. And so we propose going out to some of these affected areas, and they're trying to say no. I think that's a violation of the agreement. At their last, meeting before last, they were going to offer the employees coming over in direct violation of the agreement to go to another fire agreement instead of the one in the contract that says they're required to do. They're meeting behind closed doors, I think illegally, because there's no negotiations that they're having with the labor group. There's no labor group right now that they're talking to, but they say they're meeting behind closed doors negotiating. They're not negotiating with anyone. They are trying to be as dark and hidden as they possibly can while accusing us of mischief.
That must be where the mischief is that Mr. Larkin was referring to, that they are creating.
That's, and I don't understand it, Mr. Mayor, why they're afraid to go and talk to the public or talk to us. We've never had a joint meeting with them on this.
It's because the citizens have no idea what's going on.
Right, exactly.
And they want to keep it that way.
Exactly.
I mean, I had a conversation last week with someone that lives in the unincorporated area of Collin Ranch, and they were under the impression that service would not change. And when I explained to them that their closest fire station was going to be Verdi, they were shocked. And said that they weren't aware of that and neither were any of their neighbors, had absolutely no clue. I mean, they really felt that service was going to continue as the way it is today. And when they say, yes, it has to be on our terms, remember that the Board of County, this is just their meeting, it's the fire board, so they don't represent the whole county, they only represent the people in that district. That's about 20% of the people in Washoe County. And they're saying it has to be on our terms. So the people in Reno and Sparks, which represent 80% of the people in Washoe County, it's not what's best for them or anything else, it's the 20%. That is absolutely the tail wagging the dog. These people have been hiding behind closed doors, they're not willing to come out in public. They gave a one and a half hour presentation the other day. First, it was a half an hour presentation, and they're going to do a question and answer process there, and they shut it off and didn't answer all the questions because they said they ran out of time. And I think it's our job to go out and tell the public what's happening because they're going to expect us to provide the same level of service next July 1st. I think we owe it to the people before the end of this year that that is, here's what we're offering your commissioners to sign. Whatever it is, whether it's 80% of the total taxes or 100% or whatever, we have to come forward and say, we will continue to provide your service if your commissioners will sign this agreement. And I want to be fair and go out to them and give them as much time to look at the agreement, to put the pressure on the commissioners to do what needs to be done. And that's have more public meetings about this. Why would we take any less than 100%?
I'm not opposed to taking less just to make this thing work right, Dwight, because I don't want to just be seen as the bully, because we'll be seen as the bully.
Well, but I mean, if those people are paying for fire service, shouldn't they be paying it to the people that are providing it?
I don't disagree. Let's save that discussion for when the chief comes back and we'll have that discussion. But I think, that's why I don't think this should be, it doesn't take long to have a robust discussion. We come and say, well, we know that that's 26, 27% of their total income. We know how much it is. We say, it's going to cost us $2 million to provide that service, then we just ask for $2 million. I don't know why that takes so long to say what we need.
And I think that we still need to go ahead and be aggressive of setting up meetings with Somerset, not Somerset, with Collin Ranch and Hidden Valley and talk to those property owners. Let them know what's happening, at least what we know is happening and what's going to be. Because Sun Valley is the first responder for Hidden Valley. And so, you know, and they keep talking about the three man crews and things like this, where they're giving a disservice to the citizens in the unincorporated area when they start sending these three man crews out because unless there's somebody inside, they have to wait until the other. So a kitchen fire could be a whole house fire by the time they could go in.
Even on that, Mr. Mayor, I think they're being disingenuous because I believe that they only have three person crews or flexible staffing until June 30th of next year.
That's right.
It was a one-year contract with that, but they're telling everyone, we got this great agreement with Sierra Fire, but that disappears June 30th of next year. So they're being disingenuous about even their cost savings.
This is no more than a power struggle based on what I've seen because they want to do it under their terms, their conditions and everything else and don't care about the citizens of Reno. And we are in Washoe County, the citizens live here. They have also made in the statement and paper, here we've saved over $30 million and they can't afford to stay in this ballgame. And it's their person that said we saved $30 million, and that was two years ago. And so the $30 million, you can't tell me, they, the whole problem is they want it under their control. Number two, they made a bad deal when they took over Sierra Fire. They were in the hole, they've been in the hole, and now that's what's eating them alive now is Sierra Fire. Well, let's clean up Sierra Fire, bring it in. We don't have to create, they talk about wanting a regional agency. Hell, we already got 50% of a regional agency now. And if we work a deal with Sierra, we bring them in, now we've got 60, 70%, and you've got Sparks there. And Spark, I don't blame Spark. I'd be running from this conversation as fast as I could right now with the actions of the county commission.
I think we're starting to see the pattern, Mr. Mayor, with fire service, what they're trying to do with animal control. We're seeing a pattern of what they're trying to do. As our citizens told us at our meeting, they want us to do more regionalization. They're trying to pull out of every regional thing that they can pull out of unless it suits them. They still want to merge the water company, which is deeply underwater.
Well, the water company's $28 million in the hole, and they won't tell them why they accept that.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Frazzi? Excuse me, Mr. Azzi.
No, Ms. Frazzi's first.
Mr. Mayor, and I do, I think with, it's actually just sad, in my opinion, when the, I mean, we had the presentation today regarding our first responders and the air races, and you look at all of those people together in this room, and that's truly what a consolidated effort should look like. And I think that what's really going on here is a disservice. However, I think where we have made a mistake, and it's the same with animal control, I think we really have to have a state of the city again and a town hall to go through all of these things because the bottom line is, is that, again, the voters countywide voted for an animal question to consolidate. It's been working well, in fact, very efficiently to the point of not needing all the revenue that the voters voted on. We've got the fire consolidation that saved both parties, specifically the county, over the $30 million. But I think until we have that meeting here at night in the town hall and really go through what is truly going on here, we're not getting the information out there. Because again, the Hidden Valley, I said this at my nab because they're participate, they come because of what's going on with the road and everything else, but they had no idea that Maryland Loma's not going to be responding anymore. And the bottom line is, is really that, I just think it's come down to, this is a very sad state of affairs that we can't all get on the same page and say, we need to regionalize for this region. I mean, Pierre, you were back in the day when we're talking about consolidating and Councilman Azzi, and our voters have voted on this, not once, twice. They have voted on it twice. So I think we have an obligation to go out there and really tell people, Mr. Mayor, what's going on? Because this is what our voters have said, we want you to regionalize. And I agree with you, Dave. Everything is falling apart and not by this body. I'm not trying to place the blame, but let's be real here, this stuff is coming from the county and there's no, we haven't heard any justification for it. Not with animal services, not with fire, Mr. Mayor, and everything else that we're doing between the entities. When's the last time we had a joint meeting? There's nothing ever on there. To me, that should be scheduled immediately. We should have this public meeting between the two governments. They don't, they postponed the JFAB meetings so we can sit down and have this discussion why they're taking the positions that they are and do that out in public. If they'd show up for a public meeting.
Well, then you start looking at everything. You look at what happened up at Incline Village. Then you look at Ballardini Ranch. Now you look at these other things and all these things. Now they want to turn, three years ago, Tom Watt tried to take over the water company. All they had to do is lay a pipeline, what was that, three miles, Dave, two and a half miles? Lay a pipeline, but no, they built a 20 something million dollar plan out there. It's not even being used or partly used. So now they want the water company, after they went out and lobbied to get another form of government, Western Nevada Water Resource, and now the other. So, no, it's a power struggle and the fire's in the middle of it. We'll have town hall meetings, we can have meetings, but we need to. But I think also, we have a very limited staff in our PR department. They do a great job, but I think we need to authorize the city manager to bring somebody in that helps us orchestrate and put these things together and get it going and get an aggressive campaign going because the citizens are not being told the truth of what's going on with the water or with the fire or any other services.
Yeah, just, just one...
Mr. Azzi, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just one, a couple of quick comments. First of all, I agree we should jumpstart the negotiations. I think in fairness to both sides, we need to know where we stand. And then, as a footnote to this, it's just going to make it increasingly difficult, I think, for staff trying to negotiate some type of mutual aid, automatic aid, all of the terms. And again, I'm assuming you're okay with staff coming back to us in December so we can kind of vet this out. But if both bodies basically are pointing the gun at each other and just going to wait to see who blinks first, I just don't think that's the quickest way to resolve it. So, but at the same time, I think it's important that we jumpstart the negotiations with the county. Because I think we can come to an agreement with the county, but I agree with Dave, we're not going to do that until we bring it back to this table and the policymakers make the decision to provide direction to staff. And I don't think it's going to serve any useful purpose for the county to say that the city's intermeddling or whatever they're saying. And at the same time, I think we should try to rise above the fray to a certain extent and try to give the county an opportunity to basically, once we give direction, to try to get this thing resolved. And if it doesn't work out that way, then you're absolutely correct. What's going to happen is the county's going to have a stand-up fire department that's not going to be able to provide service potentially. And I think that's what we both want to basically avoid because whether we were able to provide service to our constituents, but they can't, that doesn't, you know, provide, serve any public purpose. But at the same time, I agree we should jumpstart these negotiations to see if we have a chance to mutually resolve it.
If I could, sir, three points. On the issue of automatic aid, there's actually two components to that. What I call the outside periphery of the city, that would be the component that specifically is addressed by automatic aid, where they've got limited stations and we would have to augment their service delivery. The second component to that auto aid discussion has to be the islands. Collin Ranch, Hidden Valley, the Zalesi Lane, Windy Hill area, those are separate and distinct because those are areas where the county readily acknowledges that they lack complete capabilities of servicing those areas. So that's where the assessed value discussion will come in. So we're talking about two separate concepts here. And lastly, I'd like to address a comment that Councilmember Sefrazza made with respect to regionalization. I am of the opinion, looking at the assessed value and the taxation dollars that are coming into each individual system with respect to Sierra. Sierra is a little bit dicey. But when you look at taxation dollars that are coming in to the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, our funding commitment that we currently fund our service, just the Reno side alone. And you augment that with the dollars that are coming in from the Sierra District. I believe that there is a possibility where we could actually regionalize with the current dollars that are coming in and keep and maintain the existing level of service. And if not, possibly even augment the level of service without compromising staffing. You know, again, this is a discussion that, you know, we would have to have with the county and it has to be an open and frank discussion. And right now, those levels of discussions are a bit difficult to have.
Excuse me, chief, would you also point out our own the area of vulnerability?
We have a very small pocket in the very northwest corner of our jurisdiction, Cold Springs. We don't have a station out there. However, we recently checked the assessed valuation and we also did a property search and there's approximately three buildings and one barn. The rest is undeveloped land. Other than that, we, you know, once we do separate, we're going to be in a relatively comfortable position to continue the current level of service delivery that the city of Reno enjoys.
Mr. Iasi.
I don't want this to get muddied up a little bit because we don't have much time. We've got seven months basically until this unwinds to discuss now about regionalization. Until, we can talk about that in the future, but we already heard from them, it's going to be on their terms. So I personally think that should drop off the table right now until we come to some agreement on what we're going to do on July first. And then we can talk about regionalization because I don't think that, it just sort of muddies the water by saying, let's negotiate this and let's negotiate that. We should just work on what's going to happen July first and then we start working on something else.
Well, then somebody needs to point out seventy percent of their district, they have to take a water tender with them, so that's a four man crew.
And responding to Pierre's notion, one of the reasons I want this quick out there is I want the public to also respond to it. Do they think we're asking too much or asking too little? If we come and say we want a hundred percent, they might say, that's, you know, you guys are really asking too much and we can always ratchet that down. But I want to be able to go out to the public and explain what we're asking when we go to Hidden Valley or Collin Ranch, say, well, here's what we're offering the county. Do you think we're being unreasonable? I'd love to be able to ask them that.
Well, we're taking all the liability with it and covering the territory, so we need to.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, also, we did have some correspondence with the Collin Ranch Homeowners Association and they've agreed to invite us to their next meeting in January. And then we're going to follow up with the Hidden Valley Homeowners Association as well. A little sketchy in the Zalesi Lane area, I'm not sure if there's one, two, or maybe even three homeowners associations or even if there's any, but we are pursuing that avenue.
Well, we could call a meeting at the Tamarack Junction out there. There's a big meeting and send it out to all the neighbors out there and have them come in. Any other discussion?
I'm sorry. Yes, in fact, we'll shoot for the second meeting if not sooner. And if, once it's generated, I'd like to get that to the councils, they can have time to digest that and read that and generate any questions.
Should we have an update next week? If you're meeting with the county between now and then, should we have an update on our agenda for next week?
Yeah, I think we should and every week now, because we're going to leave the second meeting in December for thirty days. So every week that we meet, if you could give us an update where we are.
Just a standing item, maybe.
Yeah, maybe a standing item.
Meet during the recess, I would just say that we'll be here, I mean, these issues, if there's something that's time sensitive.
Oh, we can definitely have a meeting anytime we need an emergency meeting, we can call one. Okay, thanks, chief, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chair and entertain, anybody want to speak from the public? I'm mushing, you didn't let the reporter ask to speak. Meeting's adjourned. Oh, wait a minute, I want to introduce two people before we go. Oh, we're going to. Sit down. Well, all right, let's have good deeds and then we'll adjourn. Oh, okay, good, that's good. Now, city manager, go ahead and do what you want to do. Here's the good deed man. Come on, good news, Jesus, we're here this late anyway. Well, forget mine.
Good afternoon, mayor and council, city manager. I will be brief with my news, with my good news report.
That's good.
A few items for you. This one, the first one is a little complicated, I'm not sure I really understand it myself, but a UNR team of students, twenty-one students, traveled to a national competition and brought back the gold. They went to the International Genetically Engineered Machine Competition in Indianapolis in October. The project goal that they worked on was to combine two organisms to create an inexpensive process for biofuel production. They worked all summer on this. This is a field called synthetic biology. It combines science with engineering. And the idea is to create an inexpensive process to create biofuel. It's very complicated. I could read you further notes that I don't really understand myself, but the important thing is they came back with the gold medal from Indianapolis, showing that our university is way out in front on some of these fields. Second of three points, San Francisco Chronicle on Sunday featured Reno as a place where to shop for glitz, glam and whimsy. They featured three quirky local stores. Of course, we know we have many more than three such stores, but the ones that they featured included Junkies and The Niche, The Niche and La Terra Verde. The story said, shopping in downtown Reno somehow demands things that are sparkly, a bit unnecessary and as fun as all get out. So a little feature for Reno and San Francisco. The version of the story I saw didn't mention the mayor. We'll see about that for next time. And then earlier, earlier this week, just on Monday evening, there was Project Night Night. This is part of a national undertaking, but the local effort was done, people visited the family shelter. They got a visit from Kristen Remington from Channel Two News and Brian Williams of Think Kindness and Project Night Night. They brought the kids at the family shelter tote bags full of blankets, books and stuffed animals. And then they got to sit down with the kids, they had a nice storytime event with the kids and their parents. And so the kids get to keep a little tote bag with a blanket and a stuffed animal and perhaps most importantly, a book to help teach these kids the love of reading. Those are the three things that have happened. I do want to mention though, I don't want to let this opportunity go by without mentioning, this Friday, of course, is Veterans Day. And there will be the Veterans Day Parade will begin at eleven eleven on November eleventh, right, this Friday at Court and Virginia Streets. Of course, this is in recognition of the original armistice of nineteen eighteen, which was signed on eleven eleven nineteen eighteen. The grand marshal this year is Peggy Fish. She's a World War II veteran and a marine. The theme for this year's parade is women in the military. So I'd like to invite everybody to come down and participate. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I just wanted to point out to you our two new members to the management staff, both actually former city of Reno employees coming back to the city. Bill Thomas is our new director of the community development department and we're happy to have him back. And Kate Thomas is our new manager of the office of management and budget. And it's Thomas and Thomas, but there is no relation between.
No relation.
No relation.
Well, that's great. Welcome aboard, gang. Glad you're home. Glad y'all came from the dark side and got back in the light. Anybody got any comments? Welcome aboard, gang. Now I'll take your motion, Mr. Dorch. No, no, make it again. Have a most second, all in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no, this meeting's adjourned.